So Laura, you can start anytime.
All right, so let's call this to order. We are reconvening to open session and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's stand. Oh yeah, thank you, Ed. All right, so I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
For all.
I do.
Okay, I see Dan there. Okay.
Yeah, but he doesn't know that you are because.
Laura, you're still talking.
Sorry, unmute.
No actions in closed session and no actions considered in closed session for action in open session. Do we have any statements of abstention? And we have any adjustments to the agenda? And I will stop at this point and just say welcome to everybody to our second Zoom meeting, all of you who are with us right now or looking at this later. New day and age, and I appreciate everybody who is tuning in or listening and paying attention to what's happening in schools because for me, it's key. Absolutely what's happening in schools in connection for kids is key. And I want to just ground us again, like I try to generally do if I don't remember, is that I'm really talking tonight about pride, pride in the system, pride in our system with every single person at every level of our school district who have put in heart and soul to take care of kids, provide for kids. And it's all appreciated and there's pride, everyone stepping up and there's gratitude. Every single person. So we get to start tonight with our first awards online. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Kitamura to get us started on that.
Okay, so we are not going to let this pandemic stop honoring our students and honoring our staff. So I'm going to now turn it over to Director Close, who's going to be presenting tonight. And so Director Close, are you ready to present our award winners of the Asha Year tonight?
I am ready. I'm ready and honored to do this. And I do want to acknowledge to the students who I hope are watching on Facebook that this isn't usually how it gets done. You usually get to come to City Hall and have a big fanfare and lots of people applauding you and I suspect, given the kind of district we are and the superintendent we have, that at some point that opportunity will be provided to you. But I'm glad that we're not delaying this now because you've all have obviously earned these awards. And even though it's in a small setting where you're not getting a lot of public recognition, I think the fact that you won these awards means that you're the kind of humans, both staff and students, who do the best you can every single day, no matter who's watching or no matter who's paying attention, that you have that level of conscientiousness and that's why you've won these awards. So it is my pleasure to read these and present them today. And I think that Laura, you're going to present or show pictures of our students and staff awardees as we read them. Is that right?
Correct, with fingers crossed. That's what's going to happen.
And is that going to be on our Facebook? I'd actually like to see the people.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, I'm going to be sharing my screen, so. Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, well then I'm going to start with the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School Student of the Month, Joshua Flores, sixth grader. We'll give you a second to get Joshua up there. I did accidentally show my text messages in the Zoom meeting the other day, so. Oh, there's Joshua. All right. It is a great pleasure to present Joshua Flores as Lincoln Elementary School Student of the Month. Joshua is not just a sixth grader, but he's a very special person. He is a hard worker in every class subject, even the subjects that are not his favorites. He is a thoughtful person to all with whom he interacts. He cares about his peers and all the other people around him. This can be seen in the numerous acts of caring and integrity he displays daily. He is a role model to his peers. Joshua is not only thoughtful of others, he is thoughtful about his work. He takes his time, works slowly and carefully, and is a deep, original thinker who makes connections between what he has learned, what he is learning, and his connections to his personal experiences. Joshua has a bright future with the wonderful things ahead of him. Those at Abraham Lincoln look forward to seeing what he becomes as he grows up and makes his way through school. Congratulations, Joshua. We're honored to have you as Abraham Lincoln Student of the Month. I like the jazz hands on Zoom. Very good. All right, we will move on to Luther Burbank Elementary School. And that is also sixth grader Giovanni Arroyo, Luther Burbank Elementary. Luther Burbank Elementary would like to honor Giovanni Arroyo as Student of the Month for Santa Rosa City Schools. Giovanni is a sixth grade student in Mrs. Crepple's class and exceptionally committed student. His grades confirm that, but more importantly, his work ethic and dedication confirm that as well. Giovanni rarely misses school, and if he needs to stay home because he's not feeling well, he makes sure that his work is complete when he returns. A current example of his dedication to his academics is his engagement in distant learning. He has attended most Zoom classes, turned in all of his assignments, and has offered to help fellow students with their slide deck presentations, getting onto Zoom and other online learning activities. In addition to being focused on academics, his teacher describes him as one of the most selfless, generous, and honest people she knows. She shared that Giovanni wanted to be a conflict manager for the school. Although he had the votes to serve as the conflict manager, he declined the position because he knew how much other people wanted to do it and he didn't want to take that away from them. This happened again during class officer elections. He had the votes for any office he wanted because everyone respects him, but he did not want to take the opportunity away from other students. Luther Burbank Elementary School is proud to recognize this truly nice, intelligent, honest, and kind young man. Congratulations, Giovanni. Congratulations. Jazz hands now. All right, Ridgeway. And Ridgeway Student of the Month is 12th grader Javier Ortiz Calderon. Thank you, Lauren. Javier is deserving of this recognition because of the complete turnaround he made toward a path to his graduation. At the end of quarter one, Javier earned just five and a half credits. By contrast, he painstakingly earned 36.5 credits in the third quarter. Javier responding to his advisors encouragement and made a contract with her to check in at the end of every day to report how he did in each of his classes. He never missed a day, and indeed Javier is now one of our Step Three Plus students. This means he has perfect attendance and 100% school work completion. Javier regularly earns credit for additional work he works on at home. This is after his after-school job work hours are complete. Javier's advisor is so proud and says it is a pleasure to work with him because he is kind and so appreciative. He thanks her frequently for all her help and concern for him. She says Javier just needed someone to show him they believed in him and would not give up on him. When Javier decided to make a plan to complete all his credits, he got to work to make it happen and he has not let up one bit. We are so proud and pleased Javier is getting this attention. He has surely earned it. Congratulations, Student of the Month Javier. That is, I am so impressed by that story and so moved by that turnaround. And I love also that this is such an honor in this one write-up of two people really, right? Because it is Javier's work and then also whoever Javier's unnamed advisor is. Big shout out to, I think, her as well, because obviously this was a team effort right here. And so thank you to her for providing Javier the support that he needed. All right, so we'll go on to the Employees of the Month and we'll start with Tina Boas, Abraham Lincoln Certified Employee of the Month, Speech and Language Pathologist. Tina Boas has been Abraham Lincoln Speech and Language Pathologist since 2010. However, she is much more than that to our staff, students, and families. Tina brightens a room when she walks in. Her positivity, friendly, and outgoing personality is infectious. She consistently has a positive attitude and is willing to help in any way she can. If she is not working in her classroom, you will find her in a number of classrooms on campus, supporting the students and teachers. Tina takes pride in not only what she does as an educator, but also in Abraham Lincoln. When you walk into her classroom, you feel that you have been transported into a very special place. She decorates her classroom with student assistants for the holidays, creating a very inviting environment. And students love to talk about. You will also see Tina in her school spirit shirt on Fridays or dressing up as Scooby Doo to hype up the Halloween parade. Tina has dedicated an immense amount of time supporting Abraham Lincoln's gardening on campus. She not only has gotten her hands dirty with the garden, but has written numerous grants worth thousands of dollars over the years to provide Abraham Lincoln with garden support and opportunities for students to learn and enjoy. She also has been an integral part of bringing Bird Day to Abraham Lincoln. Tina is not only a team player, but someone who goes above and beyond. Congratulations, Tina. We are honored to have you as Abraham Lincoln Certified Employee of the Month. You guys are doing great at the jazz hands. Thank you. Okay, Luther Burbank Elementary Certified Employee of the Month. Marlene Nimod, and I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, so if anyone can correct me, then please do. But she's a first grade teacher and in the first line it says, which is going to save me if I'm saying it wrong, Marlene Nimod, or as her students call her, Mrs. Nemo, is a first grade teacher at Luther Burbank Elementary School and has been teaching for 21 years. Ms. Nemo currently serves on School Site Council, Parent Club, and has mentored new teachers through the North Coast Teacher Induction Program and the migrant education program. On Saturdays, she can be found teaching Elevate Academy, where she facilitates student enrichment activities focusing on engineering and arts. Ms. Nemo has also secured multiple grants from community partners such as Sonoma County Library, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Small Business Network to fund student field trips and support teaching technology and English as a Second Language to SRCS families. She has also coordinated a quilting program where students learn how to sew and make quilts that are entered in the Sonoma County Fair. Her background is a former school counselor and being bilingual has helped her communicate and interact more effectively with students and families that are not fluent in English. This relationship has helped students integrate more easily and comfortably into the school environment and community as a whole. Her colleagues described her as inspiring, believe that she creates a warm and inviting environment for her students to learn, and that she exemplifies what a teacher should reflect for all of her students and staff. Luther Burbank Elementary School appreciates Ms. Nemo's commitment to serving students and families and congratulates her on this recognition. Congratulations. Okay, Ridgeway High School Certified Employee of the Month, Kaitlin Cameron. Science teacher. Kaitlin Cameron is a standout teacher at Ridgeway Continuation High School. Ms. Cameron transitioned from an elementary position to teaching our community's most at-risk student body seemingly seamlessly. In the very short time Ms. Cameron has been at Ridgeway, she has initiated opportunities for students, created professional development for her colleagues, solicited donations for her projects from the community, and taken on an advisory position for our team parents. Kaitlin is a biology teacher who has extended learning opportunities outside the classroom for her students. Ms. Cameron knows connection before content is imperative. Her demeanor is friendly. She exudes confidence in her students and they feel it. She began a garden in the back of her classroom. She took a tour of the campus and approached teachers to ask if she and her gardeners could cultivate around classrooms and plant sunflowers. She started the student recycling team to educate both students and teachers in the importance of recycling on campus. Kaitlin brought the Farms Leadership Program to Ridgeway High School. The program recruits and trains high school students for college and career opportunities in agriculture and environmental studies. Kaitlin is a doer. As our staff lamented about too many plastic water bottles, Kaitlin quietly wrote a grant seeking funds for water filters and filtered pitchers teachers could use in their classrooms to get students to drink the faucet water as they derisively call it. I call it Santa Rosa's finest. Kaitlin created a how-to packet for colleagues to write grants and turn them over to other sites to apply for special items or projects. If Ms. Cameron conceives of a classroom or school-wide project or outside learning opportunity for her students, she will make it happen. She is deserving of every praise and accolade that may come to her. We are so proud of her. Congratulations. Okay, Patricia Cruz, Abraham Lincoln Elementary, Classified Employee of the Month, Family Engagement Facilitator. Patty Cruz has worked at Abraham Lincoln for the past 18 years. Her first 15 years she worked in the SDC K6 classrooms as an instructional assistant, prior to becoming Abraham Lincoln's phenomenal Family Engagement Facilitator for the past three years. Patty is invaluable to Abraham Lincoln's staff, students, and families. She is never seen on campus without her warm smile and friendly demeanor interacting with parents, students, and staff. Patty is an integral part of many different moving parts of Abraham Lincoln, such as the Parent Faculty Organization, La Plaza, School Site Council, District Advisory Committee, and ELAC, just to name a few. Patty goes above and beyond every day and everything she does to support the community of Abraham Lincoln. She has strong relationships with all those she interacts with and does so with a positive attitude. Patty is a true team player that Abraham Lincoln can depend on, knowing she will be prompt and thorough with all tasks she completes. Patty is more than just a hard-working employee of Abraham Lincoln. She is family to all. Patty Cruz, hands down, deserves to be awarded Classified Employee of the Month. Congratulations. Okay, our Ridgeway Classified Employee of the Month, Dee Kelly, in honor of Dee Kelly.
Jen, are you going to do Luther Burbank or are you going to Ridgeway?
Ridgeway is next.
Yep.
I have Luther Burbank. It's just the order they were downloaded. Dee Kelly was a registrar at Ridgeway High School. The Ridgeway students and staff wanted to say a few words today so Dee's family and friends could get a sense of how valued Dee and her talents were to our community. She was a mainstay here for 25 years. Her title was registrar, though we are still discovering the many, many things Dee did to make our school run well. For many of the 15 years Dee worked through the weekend to ensure kids were in the classes they needed. Dee rarely missed anything and an error was an anomaly. All anyone would have to say in a staff meeting was, I wonder if we could find out whether, and Dee would return to her desk and produce something really helpful and comprehensive within the hour. Dee dressed for comfort. Her favorite shirt, of course, was her grumpy tee. She was casual in that way, but a force of organization and fastidiousness in her work, all done while quietly listening to her classic rock station. On her lunch breaks, Dee often could be found in the staff room reading one of her three-and-a-half-inch paperbacks. She donated her credits from Paperbacks Unlimited to Ridgeway to buy novels for our students. Her labor of love was baking. Halloween was always celebrated hanging at Dee's desk, munching on her three kinds of rocky road. The crown jewel, though, was the possibly giant cheesecake Dee brought to our holiday lunch every year. Dee was loved and respected by many and you'll miss her dearly. Congratulations to Dee. Okay, and Luther Burbank Elementary, Narina Lilly, Elementary School Office Manager. Narina Lilly has been the school office manager for Luther Burbank Elementary School since August 2018. Although she's only served in this role for a short time, she is not new to the school site. Previously, she volunteered in classrooms, was an instructional aide for a Kinder Academy and Kinder Combination Class, and most notably, a former student. Ms. Lilly is extremely dedicated and committed to her work. She has many strengths, but one of her greatest is her ability to connect with families. Not only does she know every student by name, but she also knows their immediate family and sometimes even their extended family. This skill has enabled Burbank families to truly feel welcomed whenever they come to the front office, cared for, and part of the school community. When asked, staff described her as friendly, professional, a team player, thoughtful, hardworking, calm, and pleasant. They also went on to say she is consistently dedicated to each student's needs and exemplifies the kindness and respect that should be portrayed to all. Luther Burbank Elementary is extremely proud to have Ms. Lilly as part of the Burbank family and is thankful for all of the support she provides to students, staff, and families, always with a smile. Congratulations. Congratulations to everybody and thank you for letting me present this tonight.
Your mic is off, Lori.
Are we waiting for public comment?
I'm surprised I forgot to unmute. So I said, very proud of those employees, those staffers, and grateful to them, and I wish we could recognize more. Diane?
Yes, I would like to give a shout out to Javier's advisor, Ms. Kim Case Anderson. And so let's everybody give her some snaps, some jazz hands for the work and the creation of that check-in system for Javier.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for raising your hand like this. I can see that. All right, at this point we have public comment on not agenda items. I think we had one or a few.
We have one.
All right, Laura, are you going to read that?
Yes, I'm going to leave my video off, though. This is from Oddparrot and the topic is teacher retention. Dear SRCS Board Members, the French-American teachers want you to know how much they appreciate your support through this challenging time. Knowing we are part of such a caring community brings comfort to many of us. And despite the fact we
You're muted, Lori.
Okay, we have one. And it's from Oddparrot. The topic is teacher's retention. Dear SRCS Board Members, the French-American teachers want you to know how much they appreciate your support through this challenging time. Knowing we are part of such a caring community brings comfort to many of us. And despite the fact that we cannot interact in person, feeling that we still belong to the same group and that we care for each other is a real relief. But in the meantime, we don't forget that one of our most valuable teachers is facing a hard time. As we brought it to your attention previously, Ms. Lastman received a letter informing her she won't be eligible to work for SRCS District anymore. This was a very shocking and heartbreaking news for the teaching team. Ms. Lastman would have received a RIF notice. This would have been painful news, but we could have understood. The fact that she was brutally thanked without any previous negative report is really concerning to many of us. Today, we want to testify how much we appreciate working with Ms. Lastman. She has been teaching for two years at French-American. She's an excellent fit for a French immersion school as she is perfectly bilingual. She's the only native English-speaking teacher at this school who is teaching English and communicating effortlessly with the French staff. She's a very passionate teacher. She does not hesitate to dedicate her time to develop lessons even after school hours by creating bilingual lesson plans with the French teachers. She is open-minded and discovering new teaching methods and has high standards for all of her students while still taking into consideration their learning needs and levels. She even volunteered to be the mentor of one of our teachers, providing her daily advice. During this COVID-19 crisis, she's been constantly in touch with her direct coworkers, starting to plan with them even during spring break, making sure all the staff members were fine. Her incredible energy has been so much appreciated that even our principal asked her, as the union representative, to do some researches. Many people facing the same stressful situation could have given up or done the minimum, but this is not her style. She's here spending hours every day for the kids and for us, even if her future is more than uncertain. Finding a new job in such circumstances is extremely hard. She doesn't deserve to be treated this way. She fought so much for our teachers dealing with the C-best issue. She was their best advocate. We feel it's our turn to show our support as well. A great team is comprised of people with different personalities. Ms. Lastman brings her expertise, her knowledge, devotion, and passion. And we all value this. Her style might sound too direct to some, but it's only the reflection of her dedication. We would really appreciate it if you could reconsider your decision. This letter was written and reviewed and signed by 16 French-American teachers. Thank you.
And no others have come in? No other comments?
No, let me just. No, that's the only one.
All right, there is no CSCA report tonight. We are moving on to Dee's report, so we are going to invite President Will Lyon of the Santa Rosa Teachers Association in to give his report.
Okay, I am promoting Will to a panelist. There he is.
Hello, Mr. Lyon.
Hey, how's it going?
Welcome, and you've got the floor.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, President Fong, Dr. Kitamura, and members of the board and everyone else who's listening, on the staff and in the community. It's been a quiet week, not a lot going on, you know. Catching up on my parcheesi and otherwise been working and serving students. I'm just kidding. Everybody I know is working extremely hard. I want to tell a quick story to illustrate it. My wife Tara, you may know, is she's a teacher, sixth grade at Proctor Terrace, and she's one of the leaders in our union. This morning she was up at 5:30 and she was doing Google Classroom work. She had given a quiz with 10 questions on it. And she was grading the quiz and then if the ones that all the kids got right, she didn't do this, but the ones that they got wrong, she made a screencastify video of her showing how to do the problem correctly, which she saved to Google Docs, you understand, and then she took the link and shared it next to the Google Classroom so that the kid who missed the question could see a video of their teacher showing them how to get it right. At 11 o'clock, she went to her school with some other volunteers who I'm assured by credible sources, they were all practicing social distancing and cleanliness policies. They went to the school, they loaded up their own vehicles with bags. Earlier, a couple of weeks ago, they took all the kids' stuff, they put it in bags so that they could do a drop-off, but then we got closer to the virus, so we nixed that. My coworkers are protesting in the background about, oh, there she is, and Sarah's here, maybe go on by Rover. I'm going to finish the story. So then they went to loaded up their vehicles with bags, their kids' stuff, went to Santa Rosa Middle School, distributed the bags in Chromebooks and WellWishes and as I said, she just got home, for the record, at 6:30 in the evening. And that's one teacher out of 900-plus. And those stories are happening all over our district and all over our state. 300,000 of us all over the place, we're doing that. And I can tell you the same type of stories from CSCA members and from site admin and from district office admin and from parents and from everybody I know who is touching this difficult work of distance learning. So I'm grateful for her. I'm grateful to be a teacher in a district where so many people are crushing themselves to do so much work. Makes me proud to be in a group called Teacher, and I'm so proud that we're working so hard together. I've noticed from time to time, there's been a bump or two, surprisingly. It's not easy to do this work. A Zoom meeting that lasts an hour feels like it lasted three hours for me. I don't know how it works for you, but it's a lot of energy for me to multitask. I want to thank Diane and Rick for coming to Rep Council yesterday. I invited them to come after a meeting we had last week. I'll let her speak for her, but I think she agreed with most of these things I'm going to say. We're worried about mental health. We're worried about people having too high of expectations for both for students, staff, and mostly for themselves. I feel most of the I feel most of the pressure for people to overdo it is internal pressure. No one's, no one's making them. They just have, there's a gap. We have a high professional standard. And I didn't, I knew it was high, but I didn't know how high it was. Now I have a sense of how high it is, and it surprises me, you know? I mean, I knew my standards were that high. But now you're looking around and like, everybody's got higher standards, as high as mine or better, for whatever their professional thing is. And the gap between their professional standard and what's actually possible in the first few weeks of this, it's just a huge gap. And there's conflicts that come out of the gap. Every one of those conflicts that I'm aware of that have happened between labor management have been resolved amicably. And I really, we're going a lot faster than I would have predicted a few weeks ago. If you would have said, hey, man, we're going to incrementally find out no school through the end of the year, but we're not going to tell everybody that first. You got to adjust in the middle after you already write. We don't have to revisit all that. But if you would have told me that we would be working this hard together and doing so many good things for our community and our students, I'm not that I wouldn't have believed you, but it would be hard to believe because it's gone so well. That said, we have a lot of students that I'm worried about. I want to encourage teachers to continue to do that work. And now that we're a few weeks in and we're settling in, let's help everybody chase down the students we haven't made contact with and try to bring everybody up. I know we got Chromebooks coming, you know, we got hotspots coming. I know there are teachers who are having trouble because they don't have Wi-Fi devices, or they're running out of minutes, or they got their own issues. I want you to reach out to your principal if you're having those technology issues for the teachers. And I want to just, I'll leave it there, but I'll make a commitment that we're going to get through this together. We're going to come out the other side stronger. And I think, I'll leave, I'll leave it with this one, because this was the guiding thought in the MOU, which was a huge success. It's really served our students and our staff and our admin and our schools well, I think. The guiding thought, it's not written in there, but it touches every sentence, is we said over and over again, and I've said it since then, we're going to do our best, and our best is going to be good enough. Even if it isn't, it's going to be good enough. And I hope that gives all of us a little bit of a permission to take a deep breath and figure out how to do this. So thanks again for coming yesterday. Thanks for working so hard on this. And I love and respect you all. Thank you.
Thank you, President Lyon. I like that. I think we have no LMC report. Is that right? Okay.
President Fong, that is correct.
I saw you and I read your lips.
Thank you.
So Superintendent Kitamura, your report, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. A lot of my report's going to be mixed into the update that we're going to do later on in the meeting. Just a couple of things I do want to say and appreciate, appreciate being invited to the Rep Council to talk through and answer some questions that the 60-plus members had that night. I could have probably spent a couple of hours with them, actually. Really enjoyed it and look forward to more of that, and for President Lyon to come into some of our admin meetings and do some of the same sharing and question answering. So I think that that's good. Yeah, the MOU came together both with CSC and SRTA really, really easily, number one, and really well. And I'm so grateful that we are in a place during this pandemic that that's something we don't need to worry about, that we can work together for the good, for the good of the district, for the good of the kids and the, and the staff. So, you know, super, super grateful for that. It is no joke. Will is not kidding when we talk about how hard everybody's working. But I heard a story from Director De La Cruz just as we are going live that makes it all worth it, and so hopefully she'll share that. I'll do the rest of my report interwoven into our actual board report on what we're doing in this shelter-in-place, distance-learning environment.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm going to open it up to our board members now to give their reports. I'll give a super quick report at the end. So raise your hand if you'd like to be first to give the report. Your report, Director De La Cruz.
So I have a special guest with me tonight, who is my son, Omee, who is trying to understand what we're all talking about. He is a 12-year-old, going to be 13 at Santa Rosa Middle, and this has been a really tough time with us, for us. One of the things that I got to do today, which I'm really sad that he couldn't come with me, was to hand out Chromebooks and all of the teacher packets from folks at Proctor Terrace and French American Charter School. And President Lyon, not only did Tara kill it on the, on the mic, she was the one kind of handing, you know, putting people in the right lanes to go to, whether you were picking up a Chromebook in a hotspot or your packet. Personally made for every child at Proctor Terrace by their teachers. She introduced every child who, and every parent who drove into that line with just love and gusto, and kids were like jumping out of the windows of their parents' cars to hug and see their teachers. And the story that I shared with the board before we joined tonight was how much joy I felt listening to my daughter connect with one of the friends that she had not yet seen on any of the classroom Zooms. That she was really missing, and she didn't have a way of communicating with her. We didn't have her mom's phone number. We didn't know her address. And after the Chromebooks were distributed tonight, the first thing that this little girl, my daughter, did was to Zoom each other and to figure out how to work their new Chromebooks and hotspots, and they're still at it. It's been an hour and something, and they have a lot to catch up on. And the other thing that I really wanted to share with you, Omee, that you're sitting here with me, is hearing from teachers who, so, some of whom are parents. So shout-outs to all the working parents who are trying to not only work their jobs, but also to become teachers and to help their kids get through this. But every single one of those teachers said that right now, we're all learning. We're all learning new things, and those things aren't necessarily captured in any of the packets or in the Google lessons that we're all trying to figure out how to use right now. That what we're learning is how to be different and how to be flexible and how to know what it is that we love and how it is to know what we might not love or what might challenge us and how to figure out how to do that without the benefit of the beautiful teachers that Mr. Lyon represents and all of the staff who I know you're missing right now. The other night, Omee and I ended a day of working full-time and homeschooling by lying in bed together and crying about the grief that we feel and the loss that our kids feel from not seeing their teachers and their friends and going to school every day. And Omee said, Mom, this isn't school. I was good at school. I'm not good at this. I miss my friends. I miss my teachers, and I don't know how to learn like this. And so we just had a long conversation about what a different educational experience this is right now and how it is absolutely nothing even close to the beauty of being a Santa Rosa City School student. And it's still an education. And I just really want to raise and elevate the amazing work of all of those teachers in that big, huge parking lot today and all of those staff and all the DO staff and all the parents and the kids who showed up driving carefully and practicing social distancing and wearing masks and, and coming together and just feeling so much joy and gratitude at being able to see each other's faces and, and to feel loved in quite the way that kids know that their teachers love them. Want to say anything? Because I feel like my update is also, it belongs to my children, who are students in this district. And it belongs to their teachers and to all the people who are doing the really amazing hard work of making sure that we continue to understand this as school and understand this as an education. And that we all have a part in learning how to document and understand and process this moment in our history. So just so many thanks. So much gratitude. And connect, 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 as Director McCormick reminds us. Thank you.
Director De La Cruz, I don't think you ever give a report where you don't make me cry.
Omee. Omee, be, be kind to yourself. It's all going to be okay, all right? Okay.
All right, directors. Director Close. Director, unmute yourself.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Director De La Cruz, for your comments, and it's, it's hard to add much to that, and I probably don't need to say anything, but I, but I just feel the need to thank everybody also personally for all the work they're doing at every level of this district and all the districts. And I'm never surprised when teachers step up and dig deep and do whatever they need to do to make sure their students are well-served, because it's, it's who they are in their heart, and this is, it's a labor of love for them every day. And it really shows in times like this. And so I've, I'm both appreciated talking to the educators I know and hearing about their dedication. And it's also kind of hurt my heart seeing how hard they're working and how sort of pained they are that they can't do more in this situation. And so I know that this is uniquely difficult for them. And it is really challenging for all the parents who are all of a sudden trying to learn how to be teachers while they're doing everything else they do. And so I just, again, you know, want to echo the gratitude expressed by Director De La Cruz and express that myself. And I also just want to, as a, as a human and a former child, I was one who really relied on and continues to rely on sort of external structure or rigid structures to thrive. That kind of person. I just, there's a lot of stuff out there about providing kids with, with real rigid structures right now and real rigid schedules so that they can be successful, and there's definitely something to that. There are people like me who really need that. And there's also real benefit in learning how to, how to be flexible in this moment. And, and so there's both things. So I'm number one, like really feeling for the students who are struggling extra right now because they don't have bells every 50 minutes or every two hours. They don't have, have a schedule all day long because they relied on that structure to thrive, really feeling for them. And also, I'm hopefully saying to all of us to offer it up as an opportunity to, to learn, to be present and go with the flow a little bit. I mean, I think we'll all survive this a little better. And I'm really talking to myself right now, too, if we can, if we can do that. This is an extraordinary time, and we're in it for a bit. So everybody hang in there and, and thank you for all your work. And I also just want to say, and even though I know you, we've, you've been paying for it, I want to do it again publicly. Dr. Kitamura, your, your letter to our seniors who have experienced trauma after trauma, you know, had sort of the rug pulled out from under them over and over and over again. The students of, the seniors of Sonoma County have the, had the greatest college entrance essay topic ever. It's like how my world was rocked over and over and over in, through my whole high school experience. And, and you really recognize that in your communication to them, and it, and it was just the right tone, and I want to thank you for hitting out of the park on that for our kids.
Thank you, Director Close. Other reports? Director McCormick.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Real quick, I just want to echo what President Lyon and Director De La Cruz and Director Close have said. I'm also overwhelmed by the resiliency and creativity of everyone in Santa Rosa City Schools in this unprecedented situation. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep on going, please. I know people are exhausted and tired and stressed, but it is making a difference to our students, so I encourage you to keep going. I also am so thankful that I got the opportunity to help distribute Chromebooks at Slater last week. It was an awesome experience and to see the staff and parents connecting to support their students. It was very cool. And I'm just so impressed at how organized and safe and effective that process has been, so kudos on that. And then I'll end with this. I'm also a teacher, and I have been meeting with my students and my athletes a lot on Zoom. And last night, I had the privilege of having a Santa Rosa City School, Maria Carrillo High School alum, Maya Dorado, be our guest speaker on our Zoom meeting. And, you know, we were looking to her for inspiration as an Olympic champion and guidance and words of wisdom to help us during this time of stress and grief and really struggling with the loss of opportunity for things. And she reminded us, and I don't think she came up with this quote herself, but she reminded us to never waste a crisis. And I felt like Santa Rosa City Schools is rising up, showing grit, and not wasting time and energy in this crisis, and we're actually using this crisis to grow, be stronger, be better, access more people. So I just want to encourage everyone to continue to not waste this crisis, stay healthy, and keep going. We really appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Director McCormick. Director Medina?
Hi, everybody. Just definitely want to give kudos out to all the staff for all the amazing work that you're doing and for everybody, you know, just surviving right now. I kind of wanted to touch base a little bit in terms of a lot of the work that I'm doing, you know, it relates to equity and, and our undocumented community. I've had the privilege of being able to consult with a lot of groups, starting new funds like a DocuFund from Massachusetts to Illinois to San Francisco. But the one thing that's really concerning me now that I think will affect us, you know, and our students in the next few months, is inequity in terms of assistance that will definitely impact our undocumented community the most. I'm worried about families not being able to pay the rent a few months down and potentially having to deal with the impact of evictions and the homelessness of, of, of our students potentially in the near future. If, if our leaders aren't able to do something impactful that will help keep people in their homes. So I just really wanted to highlight that issue. I think everybody's doing great work, but there's still more that needs to be done. I think there's more challenges that are up ahead based on everything that we're having to do just to deal with this virus, but the economic challenges and the mental health issues that I'm seeing from the people that I'm interacting with, just the amount of anxiety and, and not knowing what's going to happen is impactful on the parents, which I know will then flow down to the children, many of which are our students. So I just really want to highlight that, make sure that we're aware of that. And, and, you know, pressure our leaders to, to not forget of those that aren't being helped from federal funds. I know there's a lot of pressure being placed on the governor, but, you know, if you can place more pressure to make sure that people aren't left behind, I, I'd appreciate it, and I know they would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Medina. Director Sheffield. Director Sheffield?
I'm connected now. I dropped off. I don't know what happened with my connection, but I'm back on. You know, mostly I just want to echo a lot of what has been said. A lot of respect for our teachers who have worked so hard to put together the packets and the online instruction. I know in my house, there is, you know, a lot of tears and frustration and anxiety, a lot of shouting and door slamming, and the kids are struggling, too. And, you know, we we're getting by. And as Will said, you know, we we need to get by. Getting by is what we what we're going to have to do. I, you know, my wife is is essential staff at the health clinic. And so I've been home and trying to balance that work and and instruction, homeschooling balance. And it's it is a challenge. And and the parents out there, I know they're feeling this. And and if it wasn't for the the materials that were given, we'd kind of be left in the dark here. So the the information is quality. And in the times when I do have to have to jump on a call or a Zoom meeting, I know that I can just turn to the Google Classroom that have been set up to find material to keep the boys busy for, you know, half an hour. You know, it it's challenging. But also, I think in times like these, and the fact that everybody's going through this, everybody all, you know, all over the world, they're going through the same thing, is that there's understanding, too. I had a Zoom meeting today and I didn't unmute. And my kids were in the backyard spraying at the at the window. And I'm right outside of my meeting and I'm screaming at them. And then I get a text and says, Ed, you you have unmuted. And that's just that's just the normal now, that, you know, the background noise, the dogs barking, the horns honking, the, you know, the 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 family member rushing through a room. You know, this is this is all us having to get by. You know, I so I, again, I just want to go back to the understanding that we have and then also the appreciation that I have for teachers, my my kids' teachers, Ms. Drew, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Wilson, the principal at Proctor. You guys are just doing a great job of giving the parents what they need to get by. And just, you know, the appreciation that I have. Will, if you're still listening, the appreciation appreciation that I have for all you teachers. We're struggling, but, you know, it it's heartbreaking. But we're we're going to get through this. I want to stay positive. And and just a shout out again for parents and maybe even a reminder is, you know, think of think of the memories that our kids are going to have of this period. And do what you can to create some positive memories. You know, take a little bit more time to to be with family. So just a little bit more patience. I'm trying to do that. But I'm also just trying to make things fun and exciting because the kids are the kids are feeling it. You know, you can FaceTime and you can Zoom meeting with your friends. But it, you know, it it's not a replacement. It it just isn't. And and so anyway, just thinking about, you know, years from now, when we look back on on these times that we we do have some some fond memories and that it's not all heartache and pain and misery. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sheffield. Director Minieri.
Thank you. Well, first, I wanted to say thank you to President Lyon. I have this little habit of like writing down little affirmations on Post-it notes and posting them or see them. And so I actually wrote down, he said, we're doing our best and our best is good enough. So I wrote that down on a little sticky note and I'm going to post it wherever I can see it the most because I think we're we're it's it's difficult. It's a really difficult time. And I don't even have kids. Like, I don't even know how the parents are doing it, but it's such it's such a difficult time right now. And I think that what's on my heart right now is are all of our young people, all of the seniors that were supposed to graduate, that are that will graduate and and that, you know, have a lot ahead of them. I think that that sometimes as as adults, we project our emotions of of grief and of struggle onto our young people. And I know that I'm definitely guilty of of doing that because what I'm finding is that our our young people, our high schoolers, our middle schoolers, because of all the trauma and because of all of the adjustments they've had to make over the last few years, not just not just these past few months, not even these these past, you know, couple of years. It's been a while that they've been learning about a new normal. And they're so resilient. And so I just want to also acknowledge that that our young people are so resilient. And and I think that we, as adults, have to work on our own stuff because I think that sometimes it's really harmful when we project our own our own emotions onto onto younger onto young people. So I just want to acknowledge that, that that they're so resilient. And I have the privilege of working with a lot of young people in our school district. And, you know, I'm not a teacher, I'm not an educator, and so I'm not with them. I'm not connecting with them as often. But I I do see a lot of the a lot of the really good work that they're capable of and a lot of the like the unconventional wisdom that's that that our young people carry with them. So so that is on my heart this evening is just thinking of them and also what Director Medina has talked about, like just the the repercussions of all of this and how that's going to affect whether or not some of them maybe go to college or stay home to help their families. So and 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 those stories are stories that I'm hearing now. It's not like three months from now. These conversations are happening right now. So thank you for allowing me to share a little bit of of like what we've what I've been experiencing. I I did, I have so much gratitude for our district. I got to also help out during a Chromebook distribution at Santa Rosa Middle School last last week. And it was so great to to not just spend time doing something productive and outdoors. It was a sunny day. But I loved talking to to Ms. Bushman, who was actually my biology teacher at Cook when I was at Cook. And part of the reason I went into the sciences in college. And and another teacher, I don't know her last name, but Amy, she was so wonderful to talk to and to spend time with. And and they they were killing it. They were doing such an amazing job and they they did a really, really great job at outreach. Like, their method of outreach was absolutely phenomenal. I don't I don't I think they distributed most of the Chromebooks they were supposed to on that first day of distribution. So shout out to that whole team at Santa Rosa Middle School because I know that they made a really big difference. And and all of our schools and all of our teachers are making a really big difference right now, whether it feels like it or not. And I was able to experience just a little bit of that last week. So thank you for everything that everyone is doing. And like Director McCormick said, I just keep going and and remember to be compassionate with yourselves and with those around you. And like, I'm slamming doors and screaming all over the place and I live with one person. So I just, I think that we need to remember to be really compassionate with ourselves and with one another. And the the mental health impacts are so real. And there are resources. And I just encourage people to and our educators especially and our parents to to look for resources for yourself and for our kids because they're they're there. It's just a matter of looking and I'm more than happy to help if I can in any way. So thank you, President Fong.
Thank you, Director Minieri. You are the other person that makes me cry at these meetings, too. So thank you.
Amy Katz, Director Minieri, Amy Katz.
Yes, Amy Katz. She is so awesome.
Thank you, Directors Minieri. So I'm going to give the board president a report. It's not really a report, it's a commentary. And ditto to what my board fellow board members have said already. So ditto to all that. Thank you to everybody. But I'm going to say this. We are not doing distance learning. That is a euphemism for what we're really doing. What we're really doing, every single person in this system, is we are doing emergency, remote teaching and learning. And we have done it in just a few weeks. And that is everybody stepping up everywhere we we can beyond beyond measure. And so proud, thankful, all of the above. And I will say this. This has unearthed and has unmasked the very, very narrow veneer that our systems in our country have people living under. And we're talking about wage inequality. We're talking about housing inequality, health inequality, social services inequality. All of that, all of that, where we think we're fine. We're two parents and people in the household, the children have to get paychecks to support the family. And so schools, schools are like canaries, we're like canaries in the coal mine. And it's showing up. And the teachers, and I've said this before, the teachers are the ones, the counselors, the teachers, the family engagement coordinator, all know when you see close personal, the kids in the households and what's happening. The kids are resilient, yes, they're beautiful, they're resilient. But really, that runs out sometimes because there's not enough food, there's not enough money. There's we're talking about rent. I'm sure we have eviction protection, but people are afraid to use it. Or people cannot get unemployment. And so our system, our school district, we are fighting very, very hard for for equity. And we can do that at the educational level. And we're doing, we're doing our job, we're stepping up, we're learning as we go, we're getting stronger and stronger. But we're talking about the systems in this country. And so I have I have pledged myself really to keep working at the levels where we are getting dollars for school for schools in the state of California and in the nation, that we can't do this anymore. The teachers, the teachers get blamed, the teacher, not by not by us. The teachers get blamed for for kids not doing well. And we're being held to an impossible measure of the state testing. And it's just, it's unfathomable and it cannot, this cannot stand. And so I think that as we come out of this on the other end, all of us in our entire country, the entire world, are going to be taking a look at how we do things differently. And I think that we have been, our staff has been, we've been living the mission, vision, strategic priorities of what we want, our mission and goals, of critical thinking, global citizens and problem solvers and innovators and compassion and standing for equity. So let's take that and let's figure it, how do we stand for kids and how do we stand for families? So let's keep doing that. All right, so the next report is, believe it or not, a CSBA report. And I actually do have a CS report, very short. I actually did not win that election for delegate assembly. It was the incumbent who is in the strawberry, the Ulysses School District, and Jeremy Brott. So he's a great, he's a great person. And so actually, I got appointed to be to finish out a term. So I will be doing that. And I've been talking to CSBA and different people, the legislators, and just just being there, being there, being there to like, you know, nag, harangue, where's the money? How are we going to structure things differently? So that's a self-appointed job because I have no kids to take care of and I'm retired. So got to do something. All right, we are moving on now to E items, discussion action items. And we have school site reports. And it's going to be our principals who are going to be being invited into our our meeting as the panelists. So we are looking forward to that.
Yes, so Lloyd will bring them in and then we'll start the reports. Is anyone talking?
They're they're all in now. All right, so we welcome these three principals and also taking this opportunity to try this new format here with us. But I know all three of you ladies got this. So we'll start in what I see on my screen from left to right. So we'll start with Debbie Cardozo. And she can give us her report on Luther Burbank Elementary School. So with that, Debbie, take it away and don't forget to unmute.
And don't forget the time limit. Hey. Oops.
Debbie's unmuted.
Does Debbie know she's muted?
Your dad got to unmute.
There we go. I apologize, my mouse disappeared. Okay, let's start that over. Can you hear me now? Excellent, thank you. Sorry about that. So as I was saying, good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura, and members of the board. My name is Debbie Cardozo and I am the new principal at Luther Burbank Elementary School. And I'm very pleased to be here with all of you tonight. So as you see on the screen, we have our Santa Rosa City School LCAP goals focused on initially college and career readiness and student and family wellness. And to date, these goals have really been guiding our work at our site. Over with the development of the new strategic plan, specifically the vision and mission, the important components outlined in the theory of action, and the new strategic plan priorities, we are now using those guidelines to guide our work as well, which I will address more further in my presentation. So as you can see, we have our school goals that were developed in alignment with the district LCAP goals. One focused on increasing student literacy and achievement in reading, math, and writing. And the other really focused on attendance and chronic truancy, reducing that. We are utilizing the cycle of inquiry to analyze evidence to determine high-impact practices that support achievement of our school site goals and specifically the continuous improvement of instructional practices and student outcomes. And before I dive into all of that, I wanted to provide you with a little snapshot of our makeup. So you can see that on the screen. We are also a Title I school. The data before you is really focused on our goal one. And the data shows how well students are meeting grade-level standards on the state English Language Arts Assessment. You'll note that there is a gap year because our district did not test due to the fires. You'll also see that there was a tremendous amount of growth from 2016, 2017 school year to the 2018, 2019 school year, specifically in the number of students that met or exceeded the standards in ELA. And looking at the subgroups, though, you do, we will note that there is still work that needs to be done specifically with our ELS and students with special needs. So we're going to be looking at that more closely as a site. But we are very proud of the growth that has occurred. It's about 12.45% from the two years on the screen. And looking at our math data, again, this data shows how well students are meeting grade-level standards on the state mathematics assessment. Again, there's another gap year because of the fires. We had a lot of growth in our math assessment, specifically 15.61% growth in the number of students that are either meeting or exceeding the standard. And again, you'll also note that although our students are doing very well, we do have some work to do with our EL and our special education population as well. Around goal two, average daily attendance. Our goal was to have an average daily attendance of 95% or better, and we're very close. And so that's something that we're looking at as a site, as well as our chronic truancy, the amount of T1 and T2 letters that have gone home, which are essentially triggered by the number of unexcused absences or if a student is tardy for over 30 minutes. Letters go home when they reach a certain amount. We've reduced the number of T1s and T2 letters that are going home. So we're excited about that. But if you look at our next screen, which I put up on there, you'll see that we have some work to do around chronic truancy and, excuse me, chronic absenteeism. And that really relates to students who are absent 10% or more of the instructional days that we're that they were enrolled. And so that's 18 days. And and that's a lot of schoolwork that they're missing. And so that's And so that's something as a site that we are putting our heads together to truly try to look at and, and figure out why this is happening and how we can better support our students in this area. So with all that said, we have some really great data to guide our work, which leads us to determine our focus. And in the focus areas you see before you outline the various ways our site plans to meet the goals and the promises of our SIPSA, ranging from academic interventions to family engagement. When I first started the school year on our launch, we had some really great initial conversations with both classified and certificate of staff, keeping the new strategic plan in mind. And so we looked at who are we and who do we want to be as a school site? And what do we need to do differently to achieve the new vision? And what data do we need to look at further? And I put this picture on here because Bob, he's in the green shirt. He's our head custodian. And, and then we have some of our teachers in there too. But I just, I was told after that launch that that was the first time in 20 years that our classified and certificate of staff had come together and had conversations about what's going on at the school site and how we can improve. And so I love that picture because that really represents the true spirit in the work that I want to do. Collaborative. So we have a lot of great things going on at Burbank. We have a reading intervention. So we have a reading specialist that works specifically with grades two through six. And those students have been identified as needing intensive reading support by utilizing data such as DIPPLES, Let's Go Learn and Teacher Recommendation. We also have Schools of Hope, which has volunteers come in twice a week working with our first graders. And then we implemented a What I Need model modeled after Proctor Terraces. It's our two, three combo teachers. They are grouping students by ability level and rotating them to get concentrated support based on their individual academic needs. Something else that's working really well at our site is utilization of the RACE strategy. That work was actually done previously through Innovate Ed. And so the school site really liked that and is implementing, implementing it. And the RACE strategy, for those of you that don't know, is when students reinstate the question, answer it, cite evidence, and then explain and extend their answer as well. And this really helps support students in writing constructive responses. We have after school tutoring with the Boys and Girls Club, as well as individual teachers. There, we're utilizing our SIPSA dollars to provide that support. Oh, sorry. Um, we are also utilizing a lot more technology. We bought enough devices to be one-to-one. And we have a new computer lab, which this familiarity with a technology, we believe, has attributed to the increase in our SPECT scores as well. We have a new process with our SST, our Student Study Team. We had a lot of referrals, but not a lot of the students were meeting the qualifications to get special education services. So our care team revised that. And they're supporting students utilizing the PRIM model, which is the pre-referral intervention manual to address learning and behavioral problems earlier. We have a new website and a new Facebook. So we're really focused on outreach to families. We have various community partners and we're looking to extend that. Counseling, social, emotional, academic piece. We do one-to-ones, small group, class lessons on toolbox, working in tandem with restorative. And my personal favorite, and I think that we might be the only elementary school that does that, is we have a career day. So I'm very excited that we do that at our site. In regards to student incentives, we have Bengal Bucks, Nifty Kids Assemblies to recognize academic and life skills achievement. And then our teachers always participate in the district grade level PD. And one of the things that I'm doing in our staff meetings is incorporating professional development in our regular staff meetings. So it's not just a stand and deliver. That's a part of how we do business at Burbank now. So next step. I'm excited to be at Burbank. I mean, I just, I just really feel like I have landed where I need to be. I have an amazing staff, wonderful students and incredible family that I get to work with. And I'm just, I, I'm just so thankful to be there and to continue on this journey with our team. So what that looks like moving forward, our teachers really want to collaborate more. So what came out in our youth truth data is that they were wanting more professional development. And then through our discussion when looking at our SPECT data specifically, what came up was, gosh, we're doing a lot of great things and our scores are improving. I know what I'm doing in my classroom, but I'm really not sure what my colleagues are doing. There's been some collaboration at the grade level, but there was, there is a request for vertical articulation, which I love. We want to support implementing interventions earlier, a focus specifically around academic attendance based on our data. And so we want to work with staff to identify the greatest needs and really develop a whole school approach. Care and involvement in education is always at the forefront of my mind. We've had the SRJC do presentations at parent club and ELAC meetings. We've had attendance presentations, that's a focus. And one of the things that we want to implement next year though, is doing a parent technology night. So really familiarizing our parents with all the different platforms that we use to support our students. So then they can in turn support their students as well, so it'll be more of a partnership. Definitely want to develop additional community partnerships. This is my wheelhouse, I love it. And so I really want to focus on getting students prepared earlier for college, career and life. And so that's going to be one of my focus areas as well, working with our staff. Big thing is really looking at our evidence to identify those high-impact practices. We are doing a lot of really great things at Burbank, but there's only so much time, money and human resources. And so what are those big, high-impact areas that really can support our desired student outcomes? We're going to work together on defining that. And then finally, distant learning. There's been a lot of talk about that here tonight. And currently, as you know, teachers were trained on the different platforms that they could utilize and working with students. Right now, they are working in greater like teams to identify those key standards to focus on what students should know and be able to do before they move on to the next grade because they can't possibly teach all the standards like they normally would in the classroom. They're focused on that. We're really focused on putting information on our website and in our Facebook platforms. But all aside, the academic is important. But what is really, really important is that student connection piece. And our staff is doing a really beautiful job reaching out to students and families to just check in and, and see how they can support them beyond just academics. Finally, I'm going to leave you with these beautiful pictures. And I wanted to say that when I took this position at Burbank, everybody said, man, Burbank is the best kept secret. Well, I don't want us to be the best kept secret anymore. I want everybody to know how amazing our staff is, how incredible our parents are, how wonderful our students are because Burbank is where it is at. And I cannot wait to continue to work with our school community to message that out and have everybody know just what a wonderful place it is. And just how thankful I am to have landed there. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Cardozo. We will now move on to Dr. Janine Wilson. Looking forward to hearing her report from Abraham Lincoln.
As soon as I get this up and going, absolutely. Can you guys see that? I don't know how it's not getting full. Okay, well, we'll start from here. So.
Good evening. Wilson?
Yeah.
If you go over to the button to the right-hand side next to where it says share, you can hit present.
I think my, there we go. Perfect, okay. I'm going to minimize that. Okay, well, good evening, board members and President Fong and Dr. Kitamura. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Before I begin, I just want to say that I don't ever remember a board meeting that's quite as emotional as I've seen tonight. And I just want to say thank you again for everything that we've been doing together collaboratively. And it definitely is being felt and seen. So I am the principal of Abraham Lincoln. We're the Lincoln Leopards. And the SRCS LCAP and Lincoln goals are very much aligned, as you can see here. For goal one, our goal is aligned with increasing the student literacy with reading, math and writing, as well as our goal two, which is to increase the student family wellness engagement and to increase our attendance to 95%. The theory of action, I would love to say we're only focusing on just a few of these. But as you very well know, it's impossible. So holistically, we are moving forward. And I definitely think, as I reflect on giving this presentation tonight, especially with all that's been happening, I can't say that I am at least a bit surprised that our district and our school has stepped up, especially with recognizing the social emotional supports right now, especially with keeping warm, safe and dry schools and facilities, even though we are now doing it from home. So again, aligning with the strategic plan of the district, I also again, think that our vision and mission is aligned to our actions as we're moving into this uncharted territory of distance learning. And again, with the priorities of the MVPs, all of these things have, as you'll hear throughout my presentation, are being kept in mind as we're moving forward throughout the year. So in keeping this in mind with the inquiry cycle of the four phases, we'll be going through them to show how we have had our focus. So phase one, with analyzing evidence. There's a couple of different areas that we've looked at in addition to our EL data and the socioeconomic. Right now, we have approximately 55% of our school being serviced as EL students, 163 of them, which will be hopefully at some point taking the LCAP test to show if they're ready to move on to be ARFET, in addition to the 10 students that we have already ARFET this year. In addition, we're keeping an eye on our 83 students who've also been ARFET, which is about another 28% of the school. And so in addition to show a little data to the Let's Go Learn of what we focused on, as you can see for the DORA, for the language, our areas that we are in most need of increasing is our comprehension spelling. And then with math, we definitely have a lot of work to do with math. It is a struggled area, which as you can see, total score, we do need some improvement. But with looking at our EL information and some of the data, we looked at determining a focus. Last year, we focused for the first time closely looking at the close and annical reading strategies and then also diving more into the DOK or Depths of Knowledge. When we met at the beginning of the year and discussed what we felt we should focus on, the team decided that we weren't done with this and that we wanted to continue it to really give more time and attention to these growth and these skills. So that's what we've done. How we implemented these plans, there's various ways. We have done daily intervention with our reading team. And what this looks like is children from K3 are broken up into different groupings based on their abilities and where the focus needed to be. And so they are being serviced five days a week. We have a walkthrough feedback form. Again, our focus being on the DOK and strategies being used in the classroom. The staff and I developed a form where instead of just leaving more simplistic notes about what I saw as I did walkthroughs to the classroom and things, I wanted to make sure that they had more specific feedback. And so together, we developed a form where they can see exactly what I saw. Again, we have professional development at our staff meetings in addition to what the district has been working and focusing on this year. We also have set aside money so we can have collaboration with myself. Some days are just with me. And other days, we have also done it with the reading intervention teachers. So as grade levels, we can sit down and look at the data and look and see what needs to change, what we need to continue working on. Of course, the teachers have their PLC time, which they have weekly on Wednesdays, which is crucial to their instruction and moving forward with their children's improvement. We also have after-school tutoring, which our teachers volunteering to do after school, in addition to our Boys and Girls Club. We also have School of Hope that is also one of our partnerships that I'll be speaking to in a little bit as well. And right before the unfortunate incident with the COVID-19, we had started to use some of the monies that were otherwise allocated that weren't being used into what we called Computer Club, which was offering an hour of time after school to where students who don't have devices at home could come on campus voluntarily and use that time to work on their skills such as Lexia, LGL, whatever it may be, as long as it was one of the educational softwares. And we had that open for first grade through sixth grade. And we had two separate groups and it was growing in size. I believe we had about 25 to 30 average a day. So with those implementations. And how has that changed the data? So at the beginning, I had showed you the numbers of the DORA and the ADAM. And so I wanted to show you the information that we had right before we left and the growth that we had had since then. So for the DORA, you can see that for the high-frequency words, we had made about 5.3% growth. And then for the word recognition, we had another 6.3% growth. For our phonics, we had 9.5% growth. And for our vocabulary, 2.4%. For our spelling, this is one of the most profound growth, but it's also one of our areas of need, which was 12.4% growth. And then our comprehension, which again, was one of our largest areas of deficit, we had 8% growth. And so this is just a little bit of data to show you what our implementation has resulted in just up until the end of February, beginning of March, right before everything happened. Then for our ADAM, for the math. Again, this is showing our growth as well from the beginning of the year. For our total growth overall, we've made a 14%, 14.1% growth in our numbers. We made a 26% growth, that's phenomenal. For our measurement, we have 12%, 12.8%, excuse me. For our data and a measurement, excuse me, data and probability, we have 9.8% growth. Geometry, again, an area of growth, 10.3%. And algebra, 10.9%. So I'm in hopes that when we run the report at the end of the year, that the data that we saw at the beginning will definitely have increased with the implementation that I have described earlier. So in analyzing this data, there's a few points I'd like to make. And the teacher collaboration with the intervention team and the principal, we feel as though has definitely made an impact. Also, meeting with the tier one and tier two teams to discuss the data and the supporting the needs that we do monthly. In addition to my weekly meeting with the intervention team is definitely made an impact. We also are keeping up on our SSTs, providing support and collaboration with the parents to make sure that it's not just the school side of it that is being held responsible, but making sure the parents are involved and aware of the needs and challenges, in addition to the strengths of child. And then of course, the after-school tutoring, the Schools of Hope that come in and the Computer Club, all of those things definitely we feel have made an impact. And so overall, we're definitely making progress. We still have a ways to go, but we're moving in the right direction. As reflection and learning of what's happened, this couldn't be more real than any other time, especially with what's happening in this distance learning. Being consistent with the close annical reading strategies, we definitely feel have been affected. And being consistent with the close annical reading strategies, we definitely feel have been effective. Making sure we're opening that critical thinking and exposure to more of the DOK three has made an impact. In fact, there was an article that was sent to me earlier this week talking about the four ways of distance learning and the trauma and what to focus on. And one of the points was to have empowerment and to make sure that there's children that are having to make shared decisions versus having worksheets and definitely making sure that that DOK three and four is a part of this critical thinking right now is important during distance learning. And then also the part of we started to layer on student engagement with the use of academic language and student talk. And again, this is definitely a big piece of the puzzle now, not just in the classroom, but with the connection portion of distance learning as well and making sure that the children are using their voice and having connections with the teachers and with each other and in the work that they do. So the barriers and concerns that we have going forward. And we definitely need to make sure our intervention support and after-school tutoring are available to our students. The data obviously shows we have a lot of students in need and that are performing below proficient level. And so that is always something we keep in the forefront of our mind. What opportunities can we make available for our students and for our parents as well, so they can support them? One of the things that we have talked about is having a computer class offered for parents, ideally once a week, but at least once a month where we can help train the parents on how to use the devices and how to do certain things, searching on the internet or how to use the different softwares that the children are using. A barrier and concern as we are living it right now, the interrupted school year with crises. And we don't need to rehash what we've gone through, but this is definitely something that we feel has been a barrier and a concern. And for Lincoln, we've had many unfilled positions throughout the year. In our severely handicapped program, we started out with five open positions. We are still down to three that are still open. As you can imagine, the substitute turnover has has been a difficult one. And I do want to say that I appreciate the district's support on this. Program manager Julie Promise and I talked basically every morning about six o'clock, talking about how it is that we could fill these positions and support the students and with the flexibility and collaboration, the teachers, they've done a fantastic job. Attendance, of course, is always a concern. We always want to make sure we're trying to hit our goal, which transitions into my next slide for our goal two. And we were super close last year in rising to reach our ninety-five percent. My concern is this year, we've had some dips greater than we've ever had in the last two years since I've been at Lincoln. And looking at the pattern, the pattern for sure through December and January, I believe, is one of culture for my school. And unfortunately, I'm not sure how to overcome this concern and barrier. It's one that I try to communicate and work with my families on. But this year, we did have the largest deficit from December to January that we've had since I've arrived. But we continue to communicate, try to give incentives on campus. We have a perfect attendance banner that the classes fill out for each day that they have perfect attendance. The students get a reward of pencils and erasers. We put banners up in the cafeteria. We announce it. We have student with perfect attendance each month. So we are still looking for other areas and ways to work with the parents besides the meetings and on the individual through the class that we will continue to strive. So for our next steps, and we want to continuously and consistently implement our close and annical reading strategies. We also want to again continue the DOK focus, pushing for the three and four levels to increase those critical thinking opportunities. As always, we'll need to be reviewing and supporting the needs of the students as the data comes in throughout the year, making plans to make sure that we are giving the students what they need. And again, continuing the support for the students' intervention both during school and after school. And then, of course, working on the communication with the parents on attendance and overall incentives. And then finally, of course, always adapting and persevering through all the uncontrolled, uncontrollable, excuse me, interrupted school year, which, as I mentioned, we're living through once again. So some of the community partners that help us in our goal, both one and two, Schools of Hope, as I mentioned, we have twenty-one tutors that come twice a week for thirty minutes, servicing twenty-five students right now in the primary grades. Redwood Food Bank, phenomenal. Not only do they usually serve our families once a week, but now they also are continuing that during this time. La Plaza is new to our campus. This is a nonprofit supporting our Latino families and any ways that they can with their mental and emotional health. Good News Club is new to our campus this year. They come on Wednesday afternoons and they are supporting the children in good citizenships and through their biblical beliefs. And then the Audubon Club, I am very sad as I was leaving school today. I saw that they had the netting and the straw and the hay barricaded off for our herrings and egrets that come each year. And Audubon in the past years has made a phenomenal experience for our students, which they call Bird Day. And they usually come on campus and have these great stations for the students to see the birds and learn about it. I am very excited to say that they are being very inventive this year and have already coming up with ways to have a virtual bird day experience for the students so they don't miss out. So that'll be definitely something to report back on. So as I wanted to mention a little bit more about La Plaza, and they are definitely an impact on our campus this year in bringing the family, families closer in with the school and supporting their needs. A couple of the things that they do to support the school is they have what's called Open Lab. They have that after school twice a week. And on Friday, the first Friday of the month, they have what's called Friday Fiesta, where it's basically an open party where people bring food and just come together as a community. And they also support the parents and the parent voice and leadership with their parent cafes. And we had an opportunity where there was a grant where they brought both the parents and the staff together in a singing experience, which had we been in person, we would have possibly had them there with us tonight. And they've also brought mindfulness and stress reduction techniques to our campus, both for the families and the staff as well. And then lastly, they have a masculinity intersectionality consciousness, or they call MEC. And this is just a few of the things that they do. Here's just a couple pictures, how they brought La Plaza and the school together as one. These were some of the singing members that we had, part of the Fiesta Fridays, a couple of the other opportunities. Come together. So distance learning, to bring it all together in what we're doing now. And I can't say enough to reiterate what everyone has said tonight, that the staff has gone above and beyond anything I could have ever imagined with this situation that we're currently in. I have my severely handicapped classroom had a PowerPoint. The kids were writing on the whiteboard. They were interacting with the different techniques. They were raising their hand and putting thumbs up. It was phenomenal. I have teachers videotaping themselves teaching lessons so the kids can then rewind or go back and pause to see different math lessons. Speech therapist made a game of Jeopardy and different ways where the kids are interacting and so she can see them speak and hear them. And then, you know, of course, our Zoom class meetings, Class Dojo, just to name a few. Just to let you know kind of the feedback and testimonials of distance learning, I wanted to make sure that I took this time to share with you just a few. The creative thinking outside the box that is happening was one of the positives one of our staff members had mentioned. The team is collaborating more now than we ever have. I love the co-teaching aspect of Class Dojo and Google Classroom, just in supporting each other. And finally, I'm finding things that I will be able to have the kids use even after we return back into the classroom. And to know that that's coming from the hearts of my teachers during this very stressful time and while they're missing the kids and they're learning outside the box as well, was just very loving. And I'm hopefully not going to get emotional right now, but I am just so proud of my staff, which is a quick picture here at the end to say thank you for all that you've done to support us throughout the year, in addition, especially right now. And just to say thank you to my staff for all that they've done to support our students, both emotionally, mentally, and physically throughout the entire year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wilson. Appreciate your report.
Of course.
And last, but definitely not least, Ms. Valerie Jordan from Ridgeway High School.
Dr. Wilson, could you unshare your screen, please?
Please. I'm trying to. Sorry, guys. Stop share. Does it stop sharing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes. So I'm the proud principal of Ridgeway High School and together with my assistant principal or vice principal, Ally Green, we collaborated and made this slide. This is a picture of what Ridgeway's goal is. This is graduation day. This next slide is the day youth design crew came and presented to the Board of Education and also Santa Rosa City Schools LCAP goals. This next slide is the theory of action, where it states no longer will any student's outcome be predicted based on race, gender, differently-abled socioeconomic status, and/or language spoken at home. This is Santa Rosa City Schools' strategic plan over the next five years with their vision and mission statement. This is Santa Rosa City Schools' planned priorities. And the picture to the right is it is our teachers and our partnerships and their debriefing after working with students at a time of need. And honestly, that's the essence of Ridgeway, its connection before content, and that's in its practice right there. And Ridgeway High School's SIPS goals, so single student, single plan for student achievement. Goal one, to increase student learning and overall credit accrual in graduation rates. One hundred percent of the staff will participate in formal collaboration time that will focus on grade calibration, the development of assessments, the rubric development, curriculum development, and strategies to address social emotional needs. For our English language learners, Ridgeway students will continue to make progress towards English language proficiency as measured by the LCAP test. Goal two, to increase attendance and graduation rates by ten percent with additional wellness supports and advisory. And then our cycle inquiry focus would go to graduation rates and raising SPAC and LCAP scores. This is the inquiry cycle that we use. And goal one for Ridgeway, it's analyze evidence and SPACs results from two thousand nineteen to two thousand seventeen. Performance on the SPAC score decreased in English and may remain consistent in math. ELA scores decreased across the district, but overall increased in the state and math scores increased slightly in the district and in the state. So phase two, determining the focus, differentiate instruction at Ridgeway High School. So Ridgeway teachers collaborated and agreed to many strategies. To name a few of the following are the highlights: graphic organizers, claims, evidence, and reasoning, academic word walls, and project-based learning. Phase three, implement and support. This is the slide that it breaks down the how. How do we do it, right? So the grade calibration for Ridgeway staff has agreed to a no-F policy and students' grades are a combination of attendance and productivity known as the STEP program. Development of assessments. SPAC testing is conducted with their advisor, their trusted adult. Teaching teams have agreed upon a three-week assessment at the end of the unit, in addition to a writing component. Rubrics development. Common writing rubric graphic organizers and academic word walls were developed this year. Curriculum development. Teachers have collaborated across disciplines to create new and engaging programs. One example is an English class that focuses on social justice with a restorative lens. A second example is a farm-to-table concept course that includes a biology class and a culinary class. And the final, the production of the Truman Trials, that includes a cohort of students in an English social science and science class. And C or E are social emotional needs. Students are referred through the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of supports for tier-two and three teams for services. This team meets weekly to assess the students' needs, then makes the appropriate referral and resources available. We also use student screeners and youth truth survey to gather data to create groups and services for student support. Phase three is implement support and accusation to student English language LCAP assessment. Nearly eighteen percent of students maintained or increased levels of English fluency at Ridgeway in two thousand eighteen. We believe with the implementation of the new course of the ALD, the Academic Language Development Course, student scores may increase and more students may pass the LCAP test. Goal two of Ridgeway is to increase attendance by ten percent with additional wellness support and advisory. Although attendance continues to be a challenge at Ridgeway, we now have more supports in place to assist the students' social emotional needs that may promote higher attendance. Every student is assigned an advisor that assists with the student's path to graduation. We also implemented a five-house system that created created to promote student engagement during advisory. This was developed by a math teacher, Ms. Petrus, to promote student voice through rallies, activities, and weekly competitions that focuses on group loyalty. Distance learning opportunities may increase student engagement through the flexibility of learning options. We are using Google Classroom, Cyber High, and Independent Studies packets. Graduation rates, rates. Increase graduation rates by ten percent with additional wellness supports and advisory. In two thousand eighteen, we had seventy percent graduate, two thousand nineteen, seventy-eight-point-seven, and we are projected at twenty-twenty to be seventy-five percent, if not higher. Factors that influence higher graduation rates is the increased enrollment. Over a three-year period, we have had an increase to Ridgeway through an expedient enrollment process. The process is more streamlined and transparent. All high school counselors have access to view the Google Doc waitlist and the master schedule is more flexible to meet student needs. Santa Rosa LCAP goal two, increase family and student and family wellness through the full-service community model. According to the two thousand eighteen-nineteen Youth Truth Survey, students overwhelmingly identified food as an area for improvement. Our population fluctuates between fifty and seventy percent free and reduced lunch. Prior to two thousand nineteen, Ridgeway has been given elementary school portions of food. There was a five percent decrease in negative comments regarding food from the two thousand nineteen survey to the two thousand twenty-twenty survey, after we ensured that students were receiving high school portions of food. And students from transition classes have advocated Students from transition classes have advocated for more fresh fruits and vegetables, and will be offering salad bar for the Ridgeway students shortly. Goal two, continue Redwood Empire Food Bank. In the fall, after the Kinkade Fire, we partnered with them. Every Friday, we were providing groceries for 60 to 80 students and families. Goal two, mental health services and support, increased say counseling from two days to four days. We additionally had more counseling services available from SCO two days a week. We provided a grief group for students who have lost a partner or guardian, and we also offer Alateen support on campus. Goal two of restorative processes. In order to facilitate connections with staff and students, we have increased the resources allocated for restorative practices. An SAY counselor is a dedicated counselor for drug interventions that meets with students for suspension diversions once a week. Ridgeway has also increased the amount of time that we have a restorative special list on campus from one to two days. And we are running a section of English with the emphasis of social justice. Students in that class will work with an admin to create a restorative council for students who have made a mistake and harmed the community. So goal two, student safety. Regardless of the issue, okay, student safety, data we received from our Youth Truth Survey was very revealing. Regardless of the issue in the last year, students overwhelmingly feel safe at school. Across the district, students ranked Ridgeway in the 67th percentile as far as safety. While students feel safe at school, our students overwhelmingly do not feel safe at home. 93% of students in the district feel safer at home than students at Ridgeway. Ridgeway has provided students a safe haven. Students have also reported that they feel the discipline at the school is fair. We increased by 20 percentiles in the perception of fairness, whereas last year, we were ranked 65th percentile, and this year in the district, and now we're at 88. A year in review. Ridgeway High School staff and students have much to be proud of. WASC recently visited our campus and gave us high praises of the good work that we are doing. Ridgeway has recently been removed from continuous school improvement due to an error in California Department of Ed reporting. Ridgeway students were chosen to be the voice of Santa Rosa City Schools as the Youth Design Crew, and Student Representative Jasmine Moreno, as was appointed to the Board of Ed. Although there's a lot of uncertainty in the world today, one thing is certain, is that Ridgeway High School is successful because of the people and not the programs. So we end where we began at graduation. If you walk into Ridgeway's doors, you will see this poster mounted. It is also the very words we will hear at your graduation. This is Ridgeway's core belief, with Mr. Gilligan shaking every graduate's hand. To the message that we send every student.
You got this, Val. You got it.
We are so glad you came. We are so proud you took this opportunity offered, and so please, you invested in yourselves. We are so happy you're here. And attendance is key to your success. And hopefully, Gilligan doesn't retire this year. And with that, I leave it to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Good job. And yes, with that, we turn it over to the board.
Valerie, you're making me cry again. Thank you, principals, for your passion. That just shines through loud and clear, your passion for your students and your passion for your staffs. Thank you. Board members, time for comments or questions. Okay, seeing none? Oh, Director Sheffield.
I just wanted to thank you all, you know, for the advances that you guys are making in key subject areas. I took a lot of notes, but mostly, I just want to thank you guys for holding things down right now. I know you guys are feeling a whole lot of pressure. I know that you guys all have huge hearts, and you guys are doing this for our kids, the incredible work that you guys are doing. I just have to give praise. These are challenging times, and you guys are really, really right there in the trenches, holding things together, so thank you.
Director McCormick.
I also want to say thank you for these presentations. I know nothing is normal right now, and to come online and give us these presentations and show us the work that you, the real hard work that you guys have been doing, I really appreciate that. And I just want to say just a general observation, especially at Burbank and Lincoln, it's so exciting that this crisis scenario that we're in right now is already changing the paradigm of what you guys are doing. And just the thought of the technology, and the technology workshops with the parents, and just starting to head down that road and realizing how important this is, and how that's going to change everything, like looking back on days lost to PSPS and Kinkade Fire and Tubbs Fire. If we had had this on those missed school days, like, it's a total different reality. And so, we live in a different world, where in the last four or five years, there's a lot of days missed from school, and things aren't normal anymore, and this is really pushing all of you. And so, I really appreciate you sharing that, and I know it's just the tip of the iceberg with what you're going to do. And then Valerie, just a huge shout out to you. I just, I already knew it, but for you to just show that statistic of how safe and connected your students feel on your campus, you're the leader of that campus, and I'm just so proud of you, and proud of your staff, and just thrilled to hear that your students feel safe there. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Director McCormick.
President Fong, I want you, I want to say that, if you didn't notice, that the principals are very brave in putting their data up. You know, it isn't always the best data, but how can we address the things that we need to change if we're not honest and open about this? Valerie and I had a conversation about, are you sure? Are you sure I should put the data up? And I said, absolutely are. I know she's going to lead that school into a direction that we're going to see growth, that we already see that growth. And so, I just want to commend the principals for being honest and open about where they are with their students and their schools, and the willingness to work hard to get our student groups to move.
Thank you, Superintendent. I would just add that, once we are passionately there for our students, and they know we love and support them, and that comes from the principal and the teachers, and every single person on those staffs, kids are going to feel safer, they're going to feel more grounded, and they can do better in school. And so, that's what it takes, it's the connection, and that's what we are most importantly providing right now during this emergency remote learning.
And why this Youth Truth data is so important, you're going to hear more and see more of it embedded into our reports, because it's such a great indicator, baseline and indicator of what we need to do.
Thank you, principals. Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Guzman. All right, we are on item E2. Diane, you are going to be giving us an update, and I took a look at the report, and if anybody's looked at the agenda, every single system has been affected, and every single system is stepping up. And I bet you guys are working more than you were working before.
You know, it's, it's hard to gauge whether we're working more because of the way in which we have to work. So, it was hard before, it's hard now, but that's okay. That's okay. The cards we've been dealt are the cards that we're going to play, and we're going to play the best doggone game we can, so that we can ensure our students' needs are being met equitably across the districts. That is extremely important to us. And I would say, as you listen to the staff present what we've all been doing, there's a couple of themes. And one of them was that we thought, as a district office team, we were a team and working together and collaboratively. No. We were, but not like we are now. What this has demonstrated to us is really how integrated we have to be in order to pull something like this off in a district of our size, and do it well. So not just do it to be doing it, but to do it well, to ensure by name, students are receiving a Chromebook, by name, they're receiving a hotspot. I got, I'm receiving emails as this meeting's going on, parents reaching out to me about their student and a Chromebook, and what happened. I mean, that level of communication and that level of detail is because we can all come together from the various departments to make all of this happen. And then, we've talked about it before, but I'm going to just say it one more time again, teachers and principals are outdoing themselves to make this work, such that, I don't think in my 38 years of education, I've ever had to tell a group of educators to slow down, just calm down, you're doing too much, I want you to be healthy, I want you to take care of your families, and so, ease up a little bit. It's really okay. The other thing that we're telling educators, and I want them to really take this to heart, is try something new. You can do whatever you want to do in this timeframe of connecting with kids and engaging with kids, that gets them engaged and gets them connected. So, don't think about this as your classroom in the traditional setting of your school, but think about it as a whole new, different way to connect. And for parents, the parents that are listening, I tell you the same thing, is, please don't fret over making sure that every single assignment, or whatever the teacher has them doing, is done to the complete T with all the things array. I mean, don't worry about it. Do the best you can, like President Lyon says. There are no wrong answers, there are no wrong turns, as far as we're concerned. So, parents, I don't want you to think that your kid isn't going to pass, or go to the next school year. I've gotten those emails, that's not going to be the case. Don't worry about that. So, if you have questions about that, if you're concerned about that, please reach out to us, email me, email any one of the assistant superintendents. We want to be able to relieve the stress that you may be feeling, and let you know that your family and what you need to do together as a unit comes first for us. And if the school can get in there and be involved, great, but what we first want you to do is to be healthy and to be safe. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to each of the departments. They're not going to go over every single item, because they, you can see this in the board report, we're going to talk about the highlights and things of what we've done, what's been going on, and maybe some changes that are going to be coming up in the near future. So Rick, I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you, Superintendent Kitamura. Members of the board, good evening. As the superintendent said, I'm not going to go over everything in the list, but there are a couple of things that I do want to point out, as we really strive to keep business continuity and operational sustainability. And I think you'll hear that from all of us tonight, the work that's being done, the important work that's being done, in coordination with everyone in the district right now. Everyone's playing a role in some form or another. I can't express my appreciation enough for all of our staff members that have done what we didn't think we could do in a couple of weeks to get where we're at today, knowing that we still have a big hill in front of us. Nothing's finished yet, but we're moving towards it. So I'm going to just talk about a few selected things, as I mentioned, starting with communications. The work we're doing to make sure that we're keeping parents, staff, and students informed, you know, the work of Beth Burke and Dr. Kitamura. We've talked about her letter to seniors earlier tonight. That, along with the general, seems like, couple times a day, I know it's not quite that extensive, but it feels like it at times with us making sure that we can get that information out to our stakeholders, to the larger community as a whole, news organizations, so that the information has a chance to reach the broadest audience. Another one that I want to highlight right off the bat is our child nutrition services, and the meals that they're providing for our students, students in the community, students from feeder districts, one and two and three-year-olds, you name it, we're providing lunches right now. To date, we've served about 37 and a half thousand meals, by providing breakfast and lunch on a daily basis, equating to about 18,000 people coming to get meals, that would, those are repeat customers too, but on average, we're serving about 28,000 to 30,000 meals a day, which is a remarkable feat. A lot of credit to Ed Burke and all the CNS staff that are helping with this. I know many of our board members have gone out to school sites, where lunch is being served, and every time I go, the CNS employees are happy to see us, and happy to be helping the community getting these meals out there. We are looking at some modifications to the meal program right now, where we'll be doing multiple-day distribution. We're working out the details of that, so we can get two or three days worth of meals at one time, too, so there's more food available, and we're also helping to minimize exposure of our staff at the lunch distribution schools, as well as limit the exposure to parents and families that are coming to pick that up. So we're putting that together right now, and we'll have more information about that later this week and next week, as we come to a plan. It is nice that both USDA, CVE, and the other NXTs that control our food programs are loosening some of the restrictions so that we can serve more families quicker. So big hat off again to our CNS team. Same way with our IT folks. You know, a small staff there, regardless of the time of year, but really, to be able to start handing out Chromebooks last week in round one to our middle and high schools, we started today with our elementary schools, we've heard some stories tonight about that, and the excitement of parents and students getting these devices, and what it's doing in terms of connecting students, connecting students to students, connecting students to teachers. It is a Herculean effort. Right now, we have about 3,500 Chromebooks ready for distribution. I've asked, and after elementary schools, we will have dispersed about 3,500. I've asked Adrian Bika in IT, in coordination with every other department, to prepare another 5,000 for distribution, so that all students that need one will be able to get one. With that, we're also trying to provide internet access where that is needed as well. We started distributing our internet hotspots today with the elementary pickups at our schools. That'll continue this week for the remainder of the students identified as needing internet access. And then we'll be mailing home the hotspots for our middle and high school students as well as planning for round two of distribution of those additional Chromebooks. So a lot of work there just with student devices. IT is also working to set up employees with a work from home environment. We have a number of district office staff who one hundred percent of their job revolved around the office. And to ensure continuity, we're making sure that those folks have the ability to get online and get into district resources. One of the most important ones for everyone right now is payroll, making sure checks still go out on time. Making sure supplemental payroll still goes out on time. And we were able to do that for our March paychecks. Everything went out on time. Either delivered via direct deposit or through mail, depending on the preference of the employee. So they're working on that as well. A lot of credit to to those folks that that are coming in and doing something every day to prepare these devices and prepare prepare this virtual workspace to continue operations. Along with technology data department and our ed tech resources able to provide training for nearly four hundred teachers on Google Classroom on the first week. Virtually back after spring break. We know there's more training that needs to happen. Some of that will start next week and continue on as more and more teachers are utilizing this resource, more and more students are connecting. It's gonna be vital that we're able to provide these training opportunities. The same with MNO and custodial staff. Not only have they been working at the school sites to keep those, to do cleaning and disinfecting of rooms. Custodials has also been a huge, huge help to Chromebook distribution. Preparing Chromebooks, sanitizing them. Making sure in coordination with IT folks, making sure they're working units. And helping with the distribution setup and take down. This process that we put together would not have gone as smooth without them. So big thanks there. The other thing that we're working on right now. In coordination with all that, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention purchasing and their ability to pivot and get things ordered for us and get things delivered where we can implement them, especially around technology and some of the other resources that we're using to provide distance learning in what we're calling it right now, as well as some other resources that we need. Last, that I'll talk about tonight and certainly not least, is fiscal services and continuing not only the payroll aspect of it, but accounts payable, making sure our vendors that have performed services. Our consultants that have performed services, making sure they're getting paid. We know that, you know, a single paycheck can mean a lot right now to some of the people that work for, work with us from the outside. So we're ensuring that those are still being done on time. We're also getting ready as we look towards the very near future of budget development. And ultimately budget adoption in June. How we're going to perform that virtually, taking into account collaboration from the sites and making sure they have input into their site budgets as well as the larger district budget. In I'm sure in the next couple of board meetings, we'll be talking more specifically about that and the impact the May revision is going to have on the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. Potentially even a further reduction of the very small cola that was announced in January. So we're taking all of those factors into account, looking again at enrollment projections, anticipating those may change. At this point, unfortunately, it's hard to predict, but we do think we may see some exits from the district because of what's happening. So we're trying to take that into account as well. With that, I'll hand it back over and be happy to answer any questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I I will say we have a HR report out that just a tremendous lift from Rick's departments in order to get moving forward with distance learning or remote learning. At the same time, with two small children, one who is out of school and having to also be teacher or maybe referee, I'm not sure, at the same time. So thanks, Rick, for everything you've done and all the work and also still trying to maintain a home children teaching life as well. Okay, so next will be Assistant Superintendent Specter. Oh, we're gonna answer questions at the end, is that okay? Okay. And a little update on HR during this distance learning time.
That's good coaching. Diane was actually making sure I focused just on COVID related issues, but I wanna build on something she said about the heavy lifting. Because I think it ties into HR that we really do see ourselves as the connective tissue in the organization. And it's our role and responsibility to support everyone within the organization that is really doing the heavy lifting. And we're seeing so much of that right now, especially in the other departments. But we know that it's the people in each of the departments that make us who we are and we need to support them. And so to that specifically, and you can see some of the highlights, but I do really want to underscore all of the mentions about the MOUs. It took significant goodwill and grace with one another across SRTA and CSA to come together and say, we know we need to do what's best for kids as we always do, and then amp that up. And so what does that look like in this situation? So much so that our MOUs are actually being used as models across the state for what it should look like in a situation like this. And so we did a lot of work with that. To that end as well, you know, employee relations is about employee relationships and making sure that people know that they're getting paid, that they're gonna have appropriate leave, they're going to have access to the resources and supports they need. So we have spent significant time learning about all of the recent changes in FMLA and other leaves specific to the COVID crisis and making sure that all of our staff have that information and know how to access it and use it as they deem appropriate. That also means that we're working with resident and other entities to ensure that as people are working from home, they're doing it in a safe way. You know, being ergonomic, you know, making sure that they've got a space in which they can do that work. And so I'm working with that. And also that means being attentive to workers' comp claims. We have seen an increase in mental and emotional health needs. And so how are we helping to advocate access for those needs for our staff? And then also, as Rick even mentioned during his report, you know, people need to know that they have a paycheck coming in if they're one of our employees. But then they also have family members that are impacted. And so are there unemployment claims that they need help navigating or help? And I would also just say some of our work has really just been that listening ear, hearing people's stories about what is impacting them. What is maybe keeping them from being most present at work and how can we help them have the information they need and the resources they need to be able to be present in their work when you have kids at home, when you have, you know, other family members at home trying to engage in this work. So those are some of the highlights. A lot of the the legal implications of leave, of unemployment, of workers' comp and ensuring that people know that they are in regular paid status. So that that could be maybe one less stressor for them to have to deal with as they focus on what and I I'm gonna say learning, President Fong, even though we know this is emergency crisis response, but how we can support that in in HR. So with that, of course, if there are questions at the end, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'll turn it back over to either Diane or
Dr. Kitamura, that would be fine.
Yes, losing my words.
Thank you, Stacy, for that update. I do have to note that both Stacy and Rick had workers' comp accidents in their as a part of all of this. Rick fell off his chair and Stacy hurt her back. And so they are dealing with their own workers' comp issues as we speak. I have denied all claims, though, just to let the board know.
Spam and scratch.
I've denied all claims. Let's move to Steve Missoura and and highlights of student and family services and all that you're doing to make sure our kids are found and okay.
Right, and that's right. Thank you. It started with, when we came back from spring break, we just did some reach out. So what we did is we took all our different groups, special education, migrant education, ELs, Indian Ed, foster youth and homeless, and we had people within those groups reach out and make contact and make sure people had access. And if they didn't, make sure they get added to the list of, you know, folks that need Chromebooks or whatever their situation was. And so then we compiled that list and then this week, we have identified family engagement facilitators are tuning that one more time. Anyone that has not had a connection to us, and so we're gonna be following that up this week in house visiting if we have to, to find out what's happened to people if they haven't had any kind of connection. So that's been the majority of our work for the last two weeks. At the same time, doing multiple things, our special ed team is beginning to get ready. They were given ten days to kind of hold things off and wait and see before they have to really start gearing back up for their IPs, their distance learning, what are called related services, so like speech, school psychologist and therapy. They have to all kind of still create those things. And so we're working with our special ed leadership team, consulting with SRTA, cutting, putting some final touches to that, and then making sure we can kind of do the best we can to roll out those services. We're still in a little bit of limbo because Secretary of Education Betty DeVos is supposed to come back with any waivers, if any, for our federal requirements under IDEA. So we're not quite sure what we're doing. We're planning for both things. One of the biggest impacts that could could lead to is what's called extended school year, ESY. So we're not sure if we have to run that, if we have to run that through distance learning or all those kind of things. So that's one of the things our our special ed group is kind of going in. And as I said, we're keeping services going. I gotta tell you, we're keeping counseling services going. So literally the people that were already receiving clinical services from SAI and from our school-based therapist, they are getting weekly, if not more, tele-remote therapy. We've received twelve calls on our wellness line. We have a warm line, meaning we refer, we're not we're not there manning the lines twenty four seven. And we are meeting those needs of students that are now calling in, working out with our clinical therapists and making sure they get contact as well. And we're helping coordinate with counselors, some of the work they're doing with distance learning with TNL and everything already, and just kind of coordinating that work. So that's primarily what we're kind of gearing up for. And then, you know, we start, the cycle has not ended, it just looks different. We have to start our SIPSA and our LCAP conversations and come forward with those. Even though the the state doesn't tell us what the deadlines are, we know there's gonna be something and we have to kind of keep moving things ahead. So when we know more, we'll bring that back, of course.
Steve, could you speak just a little bit about what we're doing with assisting in childcare for essential workers?
Thank you, that's right. So through the county, Barbie Robinson is the county administrator has designated some of our childcare programs with our providers, so North Bay Children's Center and now the Marin Boys and Girls Boys and Girls Club of Marin Sonoma to create childcare for essential workers. So what that means at this point is that county has designated, there's a classroom at Steel Lane that's been operating for about a week and a half. And I think beginning Friday or Monday, there'll be another class that opens up at Biella. And these are designated by the county as, in this case, they're doing healthcare workers, as I understand it. They're accessing any of our families that are already in the program, if you are an essential worker, and they're they're declaring that as healthcare workers, I think even grocery store attendants, first responders like police and fire and EMTs. They're using that group and making sure that they can have childcare. CD has a very special enclave that you have to have twelve of the same providers and same population of students. And they can have no more, can't go in and out. And if you do that with the proper sanitation, you can continue face-to-face contact, obviously in greater than the ten feet or the six feet. So we're starting those as a Steel Lane and then Biella. And then we'll go from there. If we're asked, we have more room at Monroe, and we can do a number of the classrooms if the county says we need the room.
Yeah, it's just to be clear, we're not running the childcare programs that are run through the county. And so we don't have any say about who gets to utilize that childcare. But what we did wanna do was offer our facilities and our custodial staff to be able to help out. So thanks, Steve, for that. Okay, we'll move to teaching and learning. Dr. Guzman, do you wanna give us an update?
Yeah, I'll give you some highlights. I mean, obviously before this pandemic, we sort of had the responsibility of making sure that our sixteen thousand students were being educated appropriately. And so this has sort of taken on something new. Dr. Kitamura, I think, could kind of see what was heading down the track and so had the brilliance to say, look, before we went to spring break, we better get our ducks in a row and really have some opportunities for teachers to provide some online resources and this work could not have happened without the immense lift by the directors in teaching and learning. I am so immensely proud of each and every one of them because they have come together truly in this K-12 fashion to really look at how we need to look at distance learning differently. And just as Stacy Spector talked about, being a model with the MOUs, we are becoming a model within the county, not surprisingly with Dr. Kitamura's leadership, about how we really approach our distance learning plan. And really looking at, to make sure that we are addressing just not the needs of what kids need to know, but also how they're doing, to really understand that this is really around that whole idea about wraparound services and that our students are coming with much. I guess you could say PTSD for the last three years. And so how are we also supporting that through our distance learning plan with different types of curriculum? We're happy to say that we are gonna continue our professional development day next Monday. And again, Steve's team and my team have worked collaboratively together to provide many options for our teachers to continue some of their learnings in Google and Zoom, but also to have opportunities to really look at wellness and also to dive deep into some of the curricular pieces that we have, because as Steve mentioned, we do continue to move down that track. We have to think about what does the future look like, whether it's summer school or what does it look like when we come back in the fall? We know that distance learning now is just part of our reality, and this, as Karina Hewitt would say, this is an opportunity for design. And so that's the other piece that we're really looking at is how do we flip this? How do we do things differently? And I will say, just like with Mr. Lyon, we have had opportunities to have collaborative conversations with our teachers, and I think that's been really important. I mean, even getting to the piece around the packets. Both Kelly Dillon and Lisa Haley worked with our elementary teachers to make sure that they had a voice and making sure that those packets were appropriate. And so in partnership with Rick's department and Stacy's department, Steve's department, there are five thousand packets that are being mailed home this next week. So that we can make sure that there's consistency for all of our students so that as Director De La Cruz talked about, you know, not all of our students did have devices. And so we wanna make sure that all of our students have something that they can engage with around curriculum. And, you know, it's also the other pieces of making sure that we're supporting our seniors, making sure that those students, for example, who were in a P class to be able to, or or excuse me, we need a P credits to graduate. And then we're on rosters for sports. How do we address those issues? And how do we address kids that were in credit recovery? It's those nuances pieces and also the fifty thousand foot lens in which we have to look at to make sure that we're supporting all of our students. There are so many opportunities here, and as we move down that track, I can tell you honestly that each director in my department and the collaborative directors that we have in the other departments are really looking at different ways that we can support students. And it's exciting, and it's also a little bit scary and challenging at the same time. And, you know, like Steve said, we also have to think ahead and what is the LCAP gonna look at? And how do we continue to support our students in this current situation and also long term?
I'm mute, Diane.
Thank you for that. Yeah, the LCAP is going to be interesting. There are several versions of what they think may happen that we don't know yet. The one thing is they're not going to use the new template. I think that's pretty much said. But they are still trying to figure out if they'll roll forward the old LCAP or what they're going to do. So just we'll be in touch with that. Okay, I turn it, we turn it back to the board for any questions.
Director Medina.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you to all, to all of you for all the hard work and to all the staff for all the amazing work that's being done. When I look at, you know, all the issues being faced by districts throughout the nation, I'm always proud of knowing the awesomeness of the work that you're doing. But in terms of questions, I do have a question for our three issues. IP's attendance and construction. First, you know, what are we doing in terms of IP's? Are there any struggles and/or additional flexibility around IP's right now? Attendance, in terms of like our attendance requirements, has there been any additional flexibility? I did see later on, there's a new software system that's going to be, that's on the agenda to potentially help assist with the tracking attendance. But has there been any guidance around that from the state? And, you know, what are the potential implications of COVID-19, what we're dealing with and that? And then the other one with the new shelter in place order, were there any changes to potential construction that was being done that had to be stopped? Or has there been any additional flexibility around that?
Yes, I'll take the IP one. Yeah, we were given only 10 days when we came back from spring break that everything could be paused. And now they have to be put back on. And what that means is that we really don't have any clear guidance from the feds. So that means pretty much business is business as usual, so in a strict legal fashion. And that's what our legal folks are advising, that we have to basically continue as best we can. So we are trying to articulate that flexibility in terms of like our SOP minutes. We have to still continue assessments. We have to still reach out to parents. You know, parents, we've always had the ability to have parents talk remote in an IP and we've been flexible like that. So we're building a lot of that flexibility into it. It's not going to be the same. We are going to continue just to kind of move forward. There are a lot of people that are really hoping we really keep moving forward. In fact, you know, they're waiting to get some of these assessments done or IP's in place. As I mentioned, we are bringing that together with our leadership team. We've articulated a bunch of documents about how to do things. We're reviewing those tomorrow with that leadership team. We'll consult with SRTA and we hope we will get back in place and moving forward as best we can. Because the biggest concern we have is if we don't do anything, we figure that we think those IPs are going to come back to us. And we don't want to burden teachers next year of having to do two IP's for every child because they have to make up last maze and they have to do it again. So we, without any other clear guidance, we're moving forward slowly, but trying to provide flexibility. On the attendance, I can talk just a chunk of that. We're in the middle and Diane and Rick, you guys, please come in. We're building a grid around it. The state has been very unclear exactly what they want to see as attendance. We could get something a couple of days from now that tells us something completely different from what we're doing now. But we're trying to build participation and grading and use access that way. So Diane?
Yeah, so we've created a rubric and some maximums in terms of daily time being spent on schoolwork and time on the use of technology, which Olmay should be extremely happy about when he sees it. Because we, everybody's trying, working so hard and doing so many different things, which would have been okay until we got word from the County Office of Education that we need to take some sort of attendance. And so there's no clear definition about what that is. We have been told we'll just take something weekly. So like Santa Rosa City Schools does, under our leadership, we are going to just take it on and do what we need to do that doesn't penalize kids, doesn't penalize teachers, doesn't penalize parents, gives maximum flexibility around engagement and in contact with teachers, between teachers and students in a rubric format that we've been going, we have had the principals look at. We've had SRTA look at. We went to rep council last night to answer questions about the rubric. I'm having a couple of SRTA leadership. In fact, I shared it with them tonight, a revised version of it, to be able to continue to add feedback. So that tomorrow we'll meet with SRTA to look at how we'll take attendance, how will we assess a student is engaged? How will we take, if we take a look at credit, no credit, or pass, no pass, or even the high school? What deems that during this? And so we have a rubric put together for that. So we'll share with, we will share that with you as well, once we get it finalized by, with all of the stakeholders. And it'll become a part of the distance learning plan, which you've seen, which is also going to come to the board for board approval. Because it's a hefty document now, it's gotten to be, with a lot of great information that is going to be our protection for ADA protection for next year. I also think it's going to be able to be used legislatively to show what can be done during this time. But cannot be sustained without additional funding. And funding to replace what we have spent in order to get this going. So it's a multi-use document that I want to be tight. I want it to be strong. I want it to tell the story of Santa Rosa City Schools so that we can be supported from a number of different angles. So. And then what was the last part?
Construction.
Okay, construction.
Would you like me to take that one?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
First, just to clarify, another comment, Director Medina, the software down below is a single sign-on software solution. So we can stream the process for students to be able to engage with the applications that we're providing them. And mainly right now is so they can do self-assisted password reset. So we're getting that ready to roll out. Previous to this, you had to be within our network to do a password reset. So we're making that available through two-factor authentication through the portal to be able to do that from home. So that solution is going to solve a lot of problems, but it's not going to solve the attendance problem. And what we come up with for attendance, we're going to work with our data department or student information system to come up with a way to capture it, whatever we determine to be the final, final role of attendance. We're going to try and incorporate it into the student information system to answer that point. On the construction part of it, one contractor who is doing our PG&E on bill financing, extension of Prop 39 work, has left the school sites a little bit early. They have chosen to pull off under the Sonoma County Order on their own. Our other big project that's under contract right now, Santa Rosa Middle School Roofing and HVAC. They are continuing to move forward with that and they're actually taking advantage of the time to start a little bit early to ensure that it's completed by August 15th. Other projects, we are determining right now and we'll bring something to the next board meeting about what would be deemed essential projects that need to continue to move forward for other construction projects, including other HVAC and roofing projects that are not under contract at this point, but ones that we want to get under contract. An example of that would be, we just completed bidding for the Montgomery High School Roofing and HVAC project. We're going through the return bids to make sure that we have a viable bidder who can complete the work. But that'll be part of the discussion and possible resolution at the next board meeting.
Can I follow up on the attendance stuff? I just wanted to ensure that, you know, anything that we bring back, if we hear of anything, any adverse implications from the whole digital divide issue? I know that we're doing a lot to address it, but you know, there was that period where it was an issue. I'd love to hear back about that. Because, yeah, that wouldn't be good. But I hope it's part of the discussion.
Yeah, I pretty much told the County Office of Education, tell me what the rules are first, before I tell you how we're going to take attendance. And now I know I'm recorded on this, but I don't care. We're not going to penalize kids. We're just not going to do it. And I'm not going to burden teachers. So, yeah, we will bring it back.
Thank you.
Director Sheffield? Director Sheffield?
Yeah, Vic, I guess this is just a little bit more follow-up on the facilities and the summer bond projects. Are you hearing anything from labor and trades, any type of lobbying efforts? Because this is just such a, you know, a local and statewide economic boost, these summertime infrastructure projects. Again, I know we're waiting to hear back about what is essential works. But are you hearing anything organized around, you know, rallying and getting behind this? These types of projects?
I've heard a little bit of both. Those that are big proponents of keeping these projects moving. And then I've also heard pushback, even secondhand, not firsthand, but secondhand from labor organizations, you know, making sure that projects are essential because they're looking out for their employees.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that was the reason why the one particular company pulled off with the OBF work. And granted, they have, you know, 95% of it done. A lot of it's just cleanup now. Excuse me. So they'll come back when it's safe for them to do so and do the last work on that. Other companies like Matrix have requested letters from us saying that this is a project that we are authorizing them to work on for the school district. And we're getting a few more requests like that. I know the company that's doing, finishing up the security cameras as well, requested a letter to finish those projects, which will probably be done in the next two or three weeks with nobody on campus. But projects that aren't under contract, specifically those that I mentioned and a couple others that are in the pipeline, will be what we bring back to talk about by resolution, potentially making those essential projects by our definition. And for discussion and possible action on that. Under the new order, it is more restrictive of what can be considered essential, but it's still up to our discretion as an organization and your approval as a board or the action that you take on it to deem projects essential or not, that would allow them to continue to work as long as manpower was available and willing to work. So we have to take that into account, too. We also have to watch that we're not having huge price increases for doing this work, too. So we have to take that into account. Because as much construction that has gone off the table, so to speak, there's also employees that don't want to work as well, so.
Well, and we obviously do have to take, you know, the safety. That's our number one concern. So most, I just wanted to know if you were hearing from labor and trades on specifics? And it sounds like you are and hoping that you can, you know, as you continue to hear these things, keep us posted. And the second question, last question I have, actually, it's just more directed at Steve, appreciation for the work and the communication and collaboration that you're having with our special ed teams on IP's and hoping that you can also keep us posted on what's going on up to date.
Sure. Well, when we finish the document, we can share, Diane can give your notes or whatever. You guys could kind of be aware of it. But yeah, there's a lot of people know that's a very difficult task. You know, our team has been doing fantastic because we're not getting really any support direction from the SALPA, from the state. So in the shadow of Dr. Kittlemore, my special ed team is leading the county and creating documents and sharing it. Hey, this is a great idea. So we're doing a lot with that. Thank you.
Okay, and just really want to stress the collaboration work. You know, let the experts be the experts. Again, just appreciate, appreciate you bringing the team together.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, actually. Do we have any idea, Dr. Kittlemore, of the percentage of kids that we haven't been able to make contact with yet? I don't know if you have that.
They are currently gathering that information. They being family engagement facilitators, counselors, I mean, everyone who we deemed essential staff. That is our main task. Teachers, you know, if they haven't heard it from a child that in their Google Classroom or in their Zoom, it's going on a database that we've created by school site so that we can ensure to follow up with any students that get on that list. Because if you get on the list, that means we haven't been able to contact you. I do not have a percentage yet, but as the staff rolls through this, probably by next week or the week after, we'll have a number. And part of it, too, was getting the Chromebooks out. So that, you know, that was a big piece of it with the elementary going out this week. We still have probably, you know, maybe 60% of our secondary went out. We still have another 40% that needs to go out. So I think it's a little too early to give a percentage to it yet, but when we have it, we'll share it with you.
Director Meniere.
Thank you. I also want to circle, I want to circle back on the issue of attendance. And I think I share the same concerns that Director Medina has around the tracking. And I'm really, you know, glad and I'm not surprised, superintendent, that we're thinking about not, you know, penalizing students and teachers. And I'm wondering if there's any way that in these interactions that the SAFE team is having with kids who are not yet connected, if there's a way that we can gather some information as to what those barriers are, why they're not connecting? I've heard countless stories of students who are middle schoolers or high schoolers who have siblings that they're taking care of and they can't connect, you know, and other responsibilities. And so it's, you know, not entirely the digital divide, though that's huge. But I'm wondering if there's a way to capture that so we can advocate and, you know, make a case for a tracking system that is more realistic and more appropriate and more effective for our students.
Yes, we want to get that data because I imagine, I envision that our attendance rate, rate, if you want to call it that, is probably going to be in the 50s, you know, 40s and 50s percent. So just to be put that out there, so the board understands and knows, these percentages are going to be not ones we're normally seeing in the 90s percentile of attendance. It's going to be much lower than that. And I think the important data is not the 50% number or the 40% number, but the why. What is it that has occurred in this situation that that connection is not there? Because as Director McCormick said, this is going to continue, folks. We don't even know what's going to happen about the beginning of the school year. And then we're going to hit fire season and PSPS season. I mean, now we're prepared for the crisis because we've been through it so much. And so we need to resolve that so that when we do have to go to distance learning again, that we're not in the 50% rate. We're in much higher than that.
Thank you. And then I do have, and I don't know if you're able to share, superintendent, but I know you've gotten ideas for graduation and what that might look like. And so I'm wondering if you're able to share some of the more exciting ideas that you've received thus far?
You know, out of the mouth of babes, I just love hearing from the students first and foremost. I think a lot of students felt that, before I wrote the letter, that we were just going to cancel, that they weren't going to have anything. And so that assurance has helped a lot, that no, we're not going to cancel. We're going to postpone. What I've been hearing a lot, and we talked to principals today about it, is that we, and I- is that we, 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 and I, I like this idea, too. But a, a week-long celebration, we're going to party for the week, that still includes their senior trip, that still includes their prom, that still includes graduation and grad night, um, graduation practice. I'm, I'm hearing, you know, a little senior barbecue or breakfast before that. I'm hearing a sunrise breakfast. So that's the discussion that's going on. That's the, those are the ideas that I'm hearing. Um, and so today we talked to principals about that, they liked that idea. Uh, we talked about, um, if we could all do it in the same week. Let's say it's, you know, August, the first week of August, or whatever, whatever the date is, um, that the, all the high schools are doing it at the same time. That there may be a possibility of doing a couple of things together. One may be renting out Six Flags and the whole, all the seniors go to Six Flags together. Another one is something that Director Close and I've talked about, and that is a prom that includes the entire district. You know, all go to the fairgrounds. I tell you, I think the community would come, come out to, uh, support that with food and, you know, things like that. So those are the ideas that are milling around. We're gonna, principals are going to go back and talk to their, you know, staffs, their grad night people. One of the things that's come out of this is, you know, Santa Rosa High School, parent group came out with the signs and put the signs up in the yards of the seniors who are graduating. Um, and so then that put pressure on Creo. And so Creos, they're now, they're getting signs together. And so what I brought up was the fact that, you know, Elsie and Piner don't have the kind of parent groups at this point to be able to afford something like that potentially. They're already, they're already hurting for, um, being able to fundraise right now because of what's going on. And, and Monty was kind of nodding their head in there, too. So what came out of it today was, why can't the parent groups kind of work together and help out schools, the other schools as well? So, um, they're going to go back and talk about that to their parent group. So anyway, there's a little tidbit, and okay, people out there know, but nothing is set in stone. This is all you guys talking about it, but I'm, I am very much in favor for a week-long celebration, uh, sometime, um, in the summer, uh, probably more towards August than earlier than that because of where we see the, the virus going and peaking and all of that stuff, so.
Thank you, Dr. Kitamura and, um, the Assistant Superintendents and Deputy Superintendent. Just want to say two things, actually. I am really proud and inspired and appreciative of the collaborative work that everyone is doing, particularly with our unions and our teachers, um, CSCA, all staff, because our system is only stronger when we are collaborating and really everybody working together because that outcome is going to be stronger. So appreciation to, to everybody there. And then I want to praise leadership. Diane, undo your leadership, all, everybody. And, um, uh, Dr. Guzman, you were also talking about your directors, so all the directors, too, all leadership. You're making decisions in a vacuum from the get-go, making decisions in a vacuum, that we are really dependent on the state decisions or the county or the state or the federal decisions. And in the absence of those decisions, because they take longer, they're, they're bigger entities, we totally get that. We still need to move, and you have moved, and you have moved with integrity and thoughtfulness and safety in mind for kids and staff. I mean, we're talking about our staff, too, everybody in our, all of you, you guys, too, who are facing these challenges as well and, um, you know, taking care of yourselves first, I hope. You all are teachers and everybody taking care of themselves because you can't, you know, that oxygen mask story about the, in the, in the airplane. So, um, I'm proud and I'm bragging, actually, I'm bragging to people. Incredible, incredible, cannot be prouder. And, uh, thank you. All right, um, Director Medina, you have one more thing?
Yeah, just a, a couple more things to touch on for follow-up. I don't know if this is for Rick, um, but as we move forward with like potential construction stuff, I don't know if we could, uh, uh, maybe being in connection with the public health officer in terms of ensuring that as we have construction projects going on, if, if our workers are considered essential, that we, um, have some sort of accessibility to COVID-19 testing in the case of, of workers, you know, somehow being impacted so we can get them turned around, back out, you know, if they develop symptoms for whatever, um, case. Um, the other thing is, uh, property taxes due this Friday. I don't know what the impact will be, but, um, you know, hopefully it's not anything significant, but hopefully for our next meeting, we can have some further report out if we know anything about that, the impact on that. And just thinking towards like, you know, our, our, our curve has been flattened in California, which is awesome, I'm proud to be Californian. But, um, as, as more cases develop in, in our city and our county, I'm thinking of, of students that may be impacted by maybe family members that, you know, do have someone that's affected with the coronavirus and what our role will be. I don't know if we have any plans in place to how we would maybe support families and our students that might find themselves in that situation as time goes on. But, um, I'm hoping that that could be something that's thought about and, and brought back to us in the future. As, I, I don't know if we've had any, any instances or cases thus far, but, um, I think it'll be, we might play an important role in that. That's all, thank you.
Okay, you will bring that back.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Kitamura. Uh, we are moving on to item E3, which is Santa Rosa City Schools Arts Framework Planning Grant Update.
Yeah, good evening, Board. This is really an informational item. I know that Director Manieri had asked a little bit about this, um, grant. Um, we did apply for it, we got five thousand dollars, which is super exciting. Um, and as you can see here, that, um, really the focus in the beginning was to look at sort of how to support K3, but really, you know, let's be honest, this is really about supporting the K-12 pipeline, and we know that, um, we want to ensure that our students are really getting quality, standards-based arts instruction in Santa Rosa City Schools, and it's coherent across the board. And I think that, you know, this started to last year with the Blitz model with music. Um, and we know that we are growing that to really then supplement our middle school and, um, high schools and their music programs. But obviously, there's much more to a, um, a strong framework in the arts beyond music. And so, um, Director Evans is leading this charge. Um, and they actually just had a meeting yesterday. Um, obviously, it was virtual, um, it was done in Zoom. But this work will continue to move forward, and we'll also see how we can, um, support this K-12 model, just not with this grant, but also, um, within the LCAP. And you can see here that there is a robust team that is part of this group, not just teachers and administrators, but also some, um, uh, other partners throughout the county. And so this was really just a way for us to update you on where we are. And as we move forward and as we move into the LCAP season, whenever that is, we can also then highlight how we'll continue to support this program, or this grant. And with that, I turn it back over to the Board.
Director Manieri.
Thank you for the update. And the one question that comes to mind for me is, so, so this is a five thousand dollar grant. Um, and I'm wondering, like, and I don't know if, if you have the answer to this, but what, what is the gap? And how, like, is this just a drop in the bucket to help, you know, in, in the short term? Like, I, I kind of want to know, what is it going to take for us to have a comprehensive VAPA program, K through 12? Where are we at with, with doing something like that? And what is the impact of, of this on the overall picture?
Well, I think this is a planning grant for that reason, so that we can almost do like an assessment of where we are as a district. And then we'll bring that back. And then I think we need to look at where our needs are, where, where there's maybe some room for growth and what that's going to take, not just financially, but also just looking at the day, you know, and how we're structuring that day and how this can be integrated throughout the day. Because I think this is also an opportunity really to look at things from an interdisciplinary way in which we teach. And we know that, too, that through this pandemic, um, arts has been hugely important just to, just children's well-being. And so this planning grant is really actually, um, doing what you're asking is really to sort of do a needs assessment of the district.
Gotcha, thank you.
I, I also think that, um, as we're building out ethnic studies, that the, that the natural integration of visual performing arts and ethnic studies is such a exciting tie. And that, I, you know, that that will be a part of the planning for this because we're going to be rolling out kind of both at the same time. So, yeah, we'll, we will, um, flesh this out some more because I, I, I've, I really feel like it's got to be integrated. And I think for the planning grant, it'll, it'll be a enticing to future grant, grantors with that tie, K-12.
Absolutely, and also you, I'm going to just give a little shout out. We've had some success with some grants under the VAPA umbrella, so more to come, I would think.
Thank you. Uh, Director De La Cruz.
Thanks, um, you know, I know there's, there's such a patchwork of attempts by different districts and different, um, regions to fill the gaps that have happened since cuts really impacted our performing arts and our visual arts programs. Um, and so I would really also love for us to look at, you know, what programs are people using right now to kind of, you know, in this patchwork fashion? And how might we, you know, with some coordination and with some consolidation and some, you know, additional resources going to, to kind of knit those pieces together? How might we continue to lead as the biggest district in the county? And, you know, I know Creative Sonoma is also doing a, a big, huge planning effort. And so to the extent that we can, um, really coordinate our efforts with their planning efforts and to figure out how, you know, again, working within institutions together, we might, you know, knit, knit this, this quilt a little tighter than it is right now.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to say this grant is part of, um, the program that you just talked about. So that's Sonoma, so that's, 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 that's a huge plus.
And Director Evans is very involved with Creative Sonoma, too. So, good, okay, great.
So, thank you, Dr. Guzman, thank you to Director Evans, and thank you to all of the VAPA teachers out there who are doing amazing, amazing work, beautiful work. I don't think I've ever seen anything that isn't amazing. I mean, we get to go see the Green Center and, uh, where they're presenting, you know, dance and, and music and, um, going to visual arts as well and drama, all great, thank you. All right, we're moving on to an action item E4, and it is the first reading. It's potential waiver of, of the second reading, um, so we can action on this today, tonight. Updated Board Policy Multi-Tierred System of Support, MTSS.
Thank you very much, President Fong, Directors and Dr. Kitamura. We're bringing forward to you now what is basically a culmination of five years of work. Uh, as you will recall in previous presentations, we had a, a PBIS grant that we did, Best Plus, and we've been doing a lot of work in laying culture, uh, mindset, and then systems of support in. You heard it earlier today in the, in principals' presentations, every principal talks about a care team or a tier-two team. You've heard it from us, uh, twice before in presentations with TNL and ourselves in January and in, um, uh, February on how we plan to bring a system, comprehensive system that will get to the subgroup data and really make improvements that every principal has talked about that we are, are moving forward on. In February, we brought you a, a slide and a, um, a flow chart that's an example of that. And so kind of putting that all together, what we're bringing you for is the beginning of policy changes that kind of articulate those, those words, those needs. We expect to follow this up, uh, before the end of the year with a, an AR and a manual around MTSS, so we really have a full plan. This, of course, is a board policy, is not a detailed plan like an AR. We'll bring that forward once we get the collaborative work of everybody. But I think for us, and we heard loud and clear from the Board, that it's time to really make sure that regardless of what school a child attends in this district, they will have an intervention system that's consistent, you know, the practice and a policy in place. There is a way and a flow or a referral forum that is everywhere. And so we're kind of bringing that all together in the, in the beginnings of a policy around this. As I said, we'll, we'll bring more in the future. This is also related, there's also an F item in consent today for a, a, a tweak on a job description called an Intervention Counselor. So behind that, we think at the high schools to really support the new graduation requirements, we want to really consolidate this work into a position. And we're using LCAP funds and title funds to see if we can still bring that forward at, at the high school. So those two things are related, um, and we want to kind of move forward on this for next year. We are doing the best we can to remote our collaboration with this, but we're going to do everything we can to kind of keep this moving forward. And as you'll see, you'll see more and more of it's coming forward from, from us at a standardized district-wide implementation program. And without overturning over the Board for any questions.
Thank you. Board members, questions? This is really needed. It's where we're, we're pointed, and this is what we need to, to support kids with our new graduation requirements.
Yeah, and obviously, we've had, we've had one in place, this is just a revision. It was just a generic one that many other schools have done, but we really made it our own and really put in the kind of language that'll make it operational for us.
It's very specific. I can just add, I think that this program couldn't come at a better time, especially after what we know are going to be the impacts of this latest pandemic or this latest disaster, um, to really have consistent support across all schools and this, and the same kind of support, no matter what side of the 101 you live on. This is such, such a critical moment to take this action. So I'm just grateful for your continued work and really ensuring equity, um, throughout the district. So thank you.
Well, thank you for the guidance and policies, that's what the Board does, and so we're ready to move forward, for sure.
We could enter, I could entertain a motion on this?
You can, you can, if the Board's real, ready to go with it, uh, you can waive the second reading and make a motion.
I'd like to move to accept the policy as drafted and waive the second reading.
Second.
Director Medina, who, who seconded that?
Director, Director Medina.
All right. Lori, do you want to take that now?
Sure. Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. All right, that passes. Great work, great work. All right, we move on to consent items, and we have consent items, um, two through seven. Do you have a motion for that?
I'd like to move to approve consent items two through seven.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye, thank you. Those pass, and we are now going to approve the minutes, uh, the regular board meeting held on March 25th.
Move to approve the minutes as presented for the board meeting on March 25th.
Second.
Thank you, Director Medina and Director De La Cruz.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye, thank you. Do we have any board member request for information? All right, so that brings us to the close of our second Zoom board meeting on Facebook. And thank you, everyone, for being here. I know everybody has big jobs. Dr. Kitamura, you and your team, again, grateful, appreciative, very proud.
I want everybody to smile because I'm going to take a screenshot. Everybody smile. Ready? One, two, three, got it. Thank you, Dan, for translating. Oh, I did it every time. Okay, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.